Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thanksgiving week, our last meeting before the holiday. It's 6 o'clock, so we're going to get started. And if you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hilton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd remain standing, we do have an invocation by Pastor Trevor Van Lark. Yes? Yes.
Madam Mayor, City Council, members of the City of Gilroy. Please bow with me as we pray. Father God, this Thursday amongst the family, food, football, and fun, help us to take a moment to recognize our gratitude to you for the immense blessings in our lives. Let us be humbly thankful for inherited ideals from our founding fathers, which has given us freedom in so many ways. And let us resolve to share those blessings and those ideals with our fellow human beings throughout the world. Let us be grateful for families who care for us, teachers and educators who love our children, and community members and servants who cheerfully give and serve others. As Teddy Roosevelt once said, "Let us remember that as much has been given us, much will be expected from us, and that the true Thanksgiving comes from the heart as well as from the lips and shows itself in deeds." As John F. Kennedy once said, "On this Thanksgiving, let us gather in sanctuaries dedicated to worship and in homes blessed by a family affection to express our gratitude for the glorious gifts of God. And let us earnestly and humbly pray that he will continue to guide and sustain us in the great unfinished tasks of achieving peace, justice, and understanding among all men and nations and the ending misery and suffering wherever they exist." Lastly, especially this week, I cannot help but be grateful for the recent ruling that has shown favor on the Garlic Festival Association, the City of Gilroy, and First Alarm Security and Patrol. But yet I am reminded, and I pray, God, for those who continue to need healing and peace by those who have been brought evil by this devastating event. May you continue to help us as we progress towards another community event in your name. Amen.
Thank you. All right. Item 1.4, City Clerk's Report on Posting the Agenda Followed by Roll Call.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda was posted on November 16th at 4:50 p.m. Councilmember Maderas?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marx?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. All right. 1.6, Orders of the Day. We have none. 1.7, Employee Introductions. We'll start with Jimmy and then move on to Finance and Police.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. It's my great pleasure to introduce Victoria Valencia, who is the city's new Economic Development Manager. She joins the city after five years at the Chamber of Commerce, and prior to that, she worked at the YMCA and also the Gilroy Elks Lodge. She graduated from San Jose State in 2016. I did too, but not in 2016, in hospitality tourism and has been working in that field since. She has a daughter and a husband and looks very much forward to helping us with our economic initiatives and coming up with new ones for the future. Victoria Valencia.
Thank you so much, and thank you all. I really appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve our community. Thank you.
Finance Director Harjo?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and the community. Harjo Tsangal with the Finance Department. It is my pleasure to introduce you to the newest member of the finance team. It's Kati Alvarez. Kati joins us with over 20 years of experience in municipal government. She actually started her career with a private accounting firm, performing review and audits of various private and public clients before she transitioned over to a municipal government career. She started out with the city of Santa Clara, where she spent 15 years performing various accounting and finance functions, followed by her most recent tenure, which was with the city of San Jose as an accountant, too, in their Work to Future program, where she was responsible for developing, monitoring, and reporting on the program's budget and the performance metrics. With the city of Gilroy, she will become an integral part of the budget procurement and the utility billing function. Kati will be assisting with preparing periodic reports on budget, grants, and the audit of financials. She'll also be assisting me with managing the city's debt program, which includes preparing continuing disclosures to the bondholders. She will also be performing cash and investment analysis for the city's investment program, manage and monitor the city's revenues, notably the tax revenue sources that we have, as well as our two enterprise utilities, and also be assisting with various phases of the city's budget development, which we kick off every other year. Aside from that, she'll be responsible for reviewing and updating the city's fee schedules as well as the utility rates, and of course, other duties as assigned as well. Outside of work, Kati enjoys being outdoors, hiking, biking, and exploring the nature with her husband. Again, please join me in welcoming Kati Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and members of the public. I am very excited to be here, and I'm looking forward to continue to serving here at the city of Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chief Espinoza.
Madam Mayor, members of council and community members, very happy to introduce our newest team member, Mauricio Rodriguez, who's our newest police officer hired on September, I'm sorry, November 5th. He's actually been with your organization for about five years. We hired him as a community service officer. Eventually, he worked his way into detention service officer and now a police officer, just graduating the academy not too long ago. Holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from San Luis Obispo University, and he is fluent in Spanish. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family, traveling, visiting new places with his wife and kids, and working on his classic cars. Please help me welcome Mauricio Rodriguez.
Thank you, everybody. Like the chief already said, I've had the pleasure of serving this lovely community for the last five years, and I look forward to a very rewarding career. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right. That brings us to ceremonial items. We have a couple of proclamations, so I'm going to ask Jane Howard to please meet me at the podium, and this is proclaiming November 25th as Small Business Saturday. Whereas the city of Gilroy celebrates our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States, small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, small businesses are responsible for 62.7% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.4% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas 72% of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday 2022, last year, made them want to shop and dine at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants all year long, and whereas the city supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, together with the Gilroy City Council, on this 20th day of November 2023, do hereby proclaim November 25th as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants of Small Business Saturday and to shop small throughout the year. Thank you all for that. And to, go ahead and clap. Go ahead. To accept this award is Jane Howard, who's the interim CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Jane, I'm going to present this to you. And would you like to say anything? Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, on behalf of the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors and Staff, and for all the members of the Chamber, as well as all the small businesses in this community. This is very special. We appreciate this recognition and acknowledgement, and a reminder that this coming Saturday is Small Business Saturday. Thanks so much.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Picture. I'm getting better at this. Thank you. Okay, and since I'm here, I'm going to call up Dave Peoples, who is, it's in the reverse this time. Dave is here with many of the members of our Sister Cities Association to present the city of Gilroy with a proclamation from our sister city in Takamachi, Japan.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to Mayor Blankley and to the members of Gilroy City Council and City Administrator. My name is Dave Peoples, current president of the Gilroy Sister Cities Association. I'm here tonight to report that about three weeks ago, my wife, Mary Ann Teducita, and his wife, Makiko, and I traveled to Gilroy Sister City, Takamachi, Japan, to attend the 35th anniversary celebration of the Gilroy-Takamachi Sister City relationship. It was three busy days of meetings with city and school officials, community members, ceremonial plantings, area tours, luncheons, dinners, and speeches. At the ceremonial anniversary dinner, I read and presented the two proclamations from the city of Gilroy to the city of Takamachi and to the Taco Garlic International Friendship Association. During the ceremony, an affirmation and declaration of friendship was read and signed by TGIF A President Hiromi Fukuda, who is also Vice Mayor in Takamachi, and he presented it to me to bring back to Gilroy. I would like to read that declaration at this time and present it to Mayor Blankley along with some omiyagi from Takamachi. Takamachi and, this is to Takam, from Takamachi and to the city of Gilroy, celebrating 35 years of Sister City relationship, a declaration of friendship. The cities of Gilroy City, California, USA, and Takamachi Aomori Prefecture, Japan, have been sister cities since 1988. We partnered through the garlic and this year celebrate its 35th anniversary. The rich cultural exchange and friendship bonds of both of citizens have been nurtured through garlic and have deepened through many exchanges. We hereby affirm that both cities will continue to respect each other's diversity, learn from each other, further strengthen cooperation and collaboration, and serve as a bridge to the future. Signed, Hiromi Fukuda, President Taco Garlic International Friendship Association and City of Takamachi.
Thank you. Thank you. Here. Good sir.
One other thing. I was just made aware today that we hit the delegation that went to Takamachi hit the papers over there also, and the regional newspapers there, which have about 200,000 circulation, they sent me copies.
The council?
I want to pass that around to everybody there. And then omiyagi, which is gifts from Taco. This is a photo of the ceremonial planting that we accomplished during the celebration day, and then some goodies.
Thank you. On behalf of the entire City Council, thank you for all of this, and thanks to Taco. Thanks, everybody. We're moving on to 3.1, which is presentations to the council, and we've got our annual presentation by the Planning Commission. Chair Bandle from the Planning Commission will present it. Go ahead, Manny.
It's my honor as Chair of the Planning Commission to present the commission's activities over the past 12 months. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to act as an advisory body to the City Council in review of subdivisions, planned unit developments, general plan amendments, and zone changes. The commission also has discretionary decision-making authority over specified land use applications, including conditional use permits and variances from the city's developmental standards. The Planning Commission meets on the first Thursday of the month in council chambers. The current Planning Commission members include myself, Chair Anador Kushner, Vice Chair Stephanie Ali, Terrence Fugazi, Adriana Liengard, Joan Lewis, Kelly Ramirez, and I'd also like to acknowledge Adeline Moreno, who served as a Commissioner 2022 to 2023. Planning Commissioners serve a four-year term. The Planning Commission had a very busy year reviewing a variety of commercial, industrial, and residential projects. The commission also reviewed two drafts of the housing element prior to its adoption by City Council. Over the next few slides, I'd like to highlight some of the projects that we have approved, denied or recommended approval to City Council. The first one is the Royal Way Townhome Project, which was considered in October of 2022. It's located south Royal Way next to Gilroy High School. The project included 45 townhomes in 11 buildings. The project was recommended by the Planning Commission and approved by City Council. And that's an image of the project there. The next project, Electronic Billboard Zoning Amendment Project, would have allowed up to two 70-foot tall electronic billboards adjacent to the freeway spaced at least a mile and a half apart. The project received opposition from numerous community members and the public. It was denied by the Planning Commission in February 2023 after initially being heard and was continued in January 2023. The applicant appealed the commission's decision, but the project was also denied by City Council in March of 2023. The next project, Gilroy Crossings Phase 2, was considered in May of 2023 and is located south of 152 and east of Highway 101. The project included a drive-through restaurant, gas station, two hotels, and two future industrial buildings. The project was recommended by the Planning Commission and it was approved by City Council. The next project was a warehouse building on Yamane Drive, was considered in September and in October of 2023. It's located east of Monterey Road between Los Animos and Lee Flea in the Los Animos Overlay District. The project included approximately 163,000 square feet of large-scale warehouse and light industrial uses, also including moving in storage. The project requested was granted a five-foot height increase for a total height of 40 feet after being continued by the Planning Commission. The commissioners had concerns about the landscaping buffer on the western side of the building and the building massing, particularly as it related to the height increase. The project was ultimately approved by Planning Commission after the applicant agreed to landscape, to an increase in landscaping along the western side of the property. For background, the Murray-Los Animos Overlay District, combining district, was formed due to the established single-family neighborhoods existing in the Los, in the Murray-Los Animos area prior to industrial development. The Planning Commission reviews projects in the Murray Avenue zoning overlay district for compliance with related policy, which intends to soften the impact of industrial buildings, especially when they are near existing residential homes. The next project, Endeavor Cold Storage, sorry, Endeavor Storage Project, was considered in October of 2023. It is located between Monterey and Murray Avenue in the Los Animos Overlay District as well. The company rents portable storage containers for residential and commercial uses. The project includes office use, which, the office uses and warehouse uses, and also wood at the rear portion of the property for outdoor storage of empty portable storage containers. The project was also approved by the Planning Commission. Looking forward to 2024, the Planning Commission will complete their review of the comprehensive zoning ordinance update in addition to reviewing a variety of land use projects. The Planning Commission will also continue their training with city staff and the city On behalf of the entire commission, we want to express our sincere gratitude for the outstanding service provided by our city staff. Sharon, Ariana, Erin, Melissa, Craig, and Cindy, we appreciate your dedication, hard work, and commitment to ensuring commissioners' questions, comments, and concerns were addressed timely, and it did not go unnoticed. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and along with Sharon Goy, the Community Development Director, we are open to questions.
Thank you, Manny. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. You know, thank you, Manny, for taking my call last week, just so I can give you a couple heads up on these questions. And just a little bit of context for the community around what we talked about as well. Since the Bicycle Commission infrastructure duties were transferred from the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission to the Planning Commission, when it was dissolved, we updated our Complete Streets policy like we talked about. So now in our Complete Streets policy, it says, "The Planning Commission Consultation. Transportation projects and new development projects with private and public streets shall be reviewed by the Planning Commission early in the planning and design stage to provide the Planning Commission an opportunity to provide comments and recommendations regarding complete street features to be incorporated into the project." So now, this is one of the Planning Commission duties. These are part of your role. So over the past year, have you incorporated the Complete Streets policy requirements into your project reviews?
Sure, definitely. Great question. So in general, Public Works Department reviews all the new and updated, new streets or projects coming that are related to the streets, and they make sure that everything's up to city standards. Once those comments come out, Planning Commissioners do review the comments. They make sure that, from the best of our knowledge and understanding of the Complete Streets policy, that everything is in line.
Thank you. And do you think that the Planning Commission is comprised of bicyclists and pedestrians in order to provide comprehensive recommendations to staff and City Council, and that's actually a part of the MTC resolution in order to get a lot of the funding that we do through the state?
Hundred percent. Every single member of the commission is active.
Nice. And final question is, do you feel that you're receiving enough professional development and training opportunities to fulfill your duties?
We definitely are. City staff and city attorney provide a great layout and foundation throughout the year. We do do a work plan during the beginning or the end of the year for our future, work plan for the future year. And I know that the Complete Streets policy wasn't, didn't make the cutoff for this year as we had other ordinances related to housing that were a lot more compelling, but we'll definitely get to a deeper training of the Complete Streets policy.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Saying no one else, I'm just going to say it's Yamani Drive, not Yamate.
Sorry.
It's okay. Yamani. Yeah, but thank you. Thanks to all the commissioners for all the hard work. It was a busy year, we could see, and certainly, certainly was that. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So item 3.2, public comment by members of the public on items that are not on the agenda but within our subject matter jurisdiction. Ty, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three speaker cards.
All right.
First is Donald Perrino, followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by Gregory Felios.
All right. If your name was called, could you please make sure you're sitting in the front row? And so, Don Perrino, you are first. The mic is right in front of you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Petite Chief Esteban Rosa, City Council members, and Ty, thank you. I don't know if you have my publication I gave together, six, Mayor, about the hydrogen. And it was six, one year and six months ago that I wrote the letter to the editor. And it's the only way to go, or hybrid. Don't go electric vehicles. They have said that takes $47 a gallon on electric vehicles, but I heard someone else say, "Electric vehicle couldn't be charged in a half, at 10 minutes and go 700 miles." I don't know how much it costs, but that sounds ridiculous. But the mercury said, "The middle class is not buying EVs, possibly $50,000, $60,000." So that's my first topic. My second topic is, I got a delinquency notice in my mail on my October bill, and I happened to look at it in November. Holy macrobat, cut off the water January 7th. And so, my wife and I tried to go on Friday, the, whether that day is, it was closed from Veterans Day or one of the days is closed. So we went on Monday, paid the bill full, got home that afternoon, there's a charge of $8 for being delinquent. I have always paid, and we've lived in Gilroy 47 years and four months, same house on Ortega Circle. First time this ever happened. We paid my credit card, and they didn't tell me about the $8 charge. So on Wednesday, after that Monday, the 15th, I went and then saw the notice that there could be a charge on credit card bills, checks that are processed through the bank. And so I declined all that, going to pay my check. It's the only way to go, because if you want to pay and not be charged, I guess, is that true?
Well, we don't, I can't do it back and forth here. Yeah, you have 40 seconds left, so I want to make sure.
If that's true, I'll take a lot of pennies, nickels, dimes, twenties, quarters, but I'll pay my check.
Okay.
But thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much for coming. Always nice to see you. Okay, Ron Kirkish?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. Couple things. One is, as a pastor mentioned, it was a good thing to see in the Gilroy Dispatch that the city, the court found the city not liable for the damages that occurred at the festival. I can, if, looking ahead, I think that might be favorable for not only our city, but other cities that have festivals and things like that. Hopefully, that will help bring the cost of insurance down for future events. The second thing is Montessorino. I had a communication with Montessorino last week in regards to hybrid meetings, and they said, I asked them if they had hybrid meetings. They said yes. I said, "Have they had any problems?", and they said yes. They said that at the previous meeting about two, three weeks ago, they were Zoom bombed, and a bunch of people called in and were ranting a bunch of antisemitic problems, which is becoming normal now. So again, you know how I feel about hybrid meetings. I'm not for them, and I think this is just another incident why we should be careful when we consider these. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Greg Felios?
Good evening, Mayor Blankley and the council. Last week, you proclaimed Gilroy is united against hate. Fabulous week, and thank you for the proclamation. I wanted to follow up. Last Thursday, there was a nice meeting, a fabulous meeting, of people at the Gilroy Library sponsored by the American Association of University Women and the Interfaith Community of South County. And "community" is highlighted by the words "unity," and it's spelled out in their informational package. In this, in this group, we had, we had a wonderful time. We're all together, we're all coming from different viewpoints, different political viewpoints, different socioeconomic status, different race, different genders. But what we were there to do was work together as a community for caring and compassion. Now, next, next year, there'll be some, there'll be some voting and people, there's going to be a lot of differences, and there's going to be, in the council, there's going to be people that are coming up, they're going to have different viewpoints and different perspectives. And in this group, we had an opportunity to, to work together, and hopefully, and we want to thank the council, because these are the people that are going to be actively involved in the upcoming voting season. These are the people who are educated and concerned and care about the community. I just want to let you guys know that if you're, if you're interested, the Interfaith Community of South County and the American Association of University Women, working together to get people educated, to get people aware and actively involved. Thank you so much.
Okay. You actually do have some more time. On my computer, it went out. Is that right?
I do not know what happened, but I'll take a look and see.
Okay. Are you finished? Okay, that's okay. I just didn't want to cut you off when there might have been some more time. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, and there are no other public comments, correct?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item four, which is reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco?
No reports.
Councilmember Armanderes?
No reports.
Councilmember Marx?
I just have a short one. Last Thursday, I attended the Santa Clara Valley
I just have a short one. Last Thursday, I attended the Santa Clara Valley Agency Habitat Implementation Board, where they reported on the progress on the Pacheco and Paharo restoration projects. They've created a buffer, which is going to help the soil from stopping going into the rivers. And they've also done a lot of tree and plants planting, which is also going to help with the soil erosion.
That's it. All right, thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, at the November meeting, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors announced the appointment of its new CEO, Monica Padilla, who currently serves as the agency's Chief Operating Officer and Director of Power Resources. She will assume the role on April 1st, 2024, after current CEO, Girish Balasandran, retires at the end of March. Padilla's selection was approved unanimously by the SVC E Board. Padilla will lead the dynamic agency in advancing decarbonization programs and policies, and continue collaborating with the SVC E Board and communities to achieve our shared vision. The SVC E Board of Directors approved a 15-year power purchase agreement with Pattern Energy for a new wind project located in New Mexico. The new construction wind project will provide SVC 100 megawatts of renewable electricity, helping SVC to achieve its goal of reaching 75% renewable portfolio standards by 2030. This is the 20th long-term power purchase agreement that has signed by the, that the agency has signed, representing over 900 megawatts of clean power, 1,800 megawatt hours of battery storage, and a total of 3.6 billion invested in clean power projects. The Board of Directors approved implementation of the net bill tariff, more commonly known as NEM 3.0, which is the new billing structure ordered by the California Public Utilities Commission for new solar customers who've installed systems after April 15, 2023. All new solar customers will have the NBT rate structure implemented via PG&E starting in December. SVC E will collect and analyze customer performance data during the course of 2024 to suggest potential modifications to the SVC generation portion in 2025. SVC is launching two new programs to support member agencies and local decarbonization. Using $4 million previously allocated by the Board of Directors, SVC will meet member agencies where they are, where they are to evaluate permit improvement and policy opportunities that could reduce barriers for residents and businesses going electric. Through the $3 million permit modernization and $1 million policy experimental programs, SVC will meet with each agency to evaluate opportunities that make sense in their community and develop a tailored action plan. Member jurisdictions will also be able to receive the technical, legal, and staff resources needed to, needed to support the implementation of the plan. And lastly, SVC E member agencies have taken impactful actions by passing new construction reach codes and have the power, power to encourage and incentivize decarbonization through additional policy. These programs are available to all 13 SVC communities. Three communities will have the opportunity to receive even more support than their plans by joining the leadership cohort. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
No report.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. I want to thank the Veterans Hall and Christine West for putting on such a great veterans parade, for all those community members that not only volunteered but attended, and to our singing mayor for singing at the parade. So thank you for that, and thank you for everything that was done to make that a wonderful parade. Last week, we had our downtown committee, meeting, and I think it went extremely well. We are going to be presenting our recommendations pretty soon to the council in hopes of bringing in new ideas and/or improvements for our downtown. So we look forward to presenting that to the council. I met with the Davenport College President to see if we could build a partnership with San Clara University, see if we can get more teachers in graduate school and get their credentials. So we're working on that to see if that might be a possibility. And then, yeah, the Christmas parade coming on December 2nd. I want to thank the GWBA for all those that are involved in that, and we look forward to participating in that. That's it.
All right, thank you. Okay, on mine, Caltrain Policy Group is meeting next week at City Hall in Mountain View, and that's going to be in person with all the representatives from San Francisco down to Gilroy to continue discussion on, it's mostly funding strategies for electrification and grade separations that go all the way down the corridor. South County Youth Task Force also met last week, and there was very long discussion on violence prevention and intervention response. And not only to address youth, but also on needing to find a process for dealing with adults who are complicit. That has become an evident problem, and those discussions are, they're hard to listen to. There was even an unprovoked attack at one of our schools in dealing with all that goes on with there. So that was the big part of the discussion at the last meeting. We'll be meeting again in January. Good news that we heard, though, is some happy progress at Alexander Station, some uplifting community events, a more engaged management company, and opportunities for our Gilroy Police Department to participate too. So that was nice to hear. Our Cities Association, you heard that earlier, we, well, no, we had two council members here last week, visiting from Angra. So that may not have been said, but then some delegates from here went to Takamachi. So those are two of our sister cities that recently had some activity. And for VTA, the only thing that came up was, because that meets once a month, and I reported on the board meeting last, last council meeting, but we had an Administration and Finance Standing Committee meeting, nothing that directly affects Gilroy, but we did recommend approval to the board to extend by one year the Altamont Commuter Express Shuttle Program, and to provide design support during construction of the Eastridge to BART Regional Connector Project. That's my report.
Mayor, do you mind, I'm sorry, I forgot something.
Sure.
Yeah, sorry about that. A couple more things. I was asked this weekend to meet with a, a restaurant owner in Campbell. The restaurant is called Luna's, in hopes that possibly they may be interested in coming to Gilroy, so in being proactive and trying to find businesses to come to Gilroy. So we had a really good discussion. The general manager is actually a resident of Gilroy, so we had that discussion, and we have more discussions to come. And then tomorrow, I'm meeting with a potential buyer who's looking to purchase a building in downtown, hopefully to start up a business. So I'll be meeting with them, showing them around, and hopefully we can get them to invest in Gilroy. That's it.
Okay. All right, under Council Correspondence, we have none. Under Future Council Initiated Items, does anyone have something to add? You do?
I do.
Councilmember Armandares?
I would like to add to the agenda a resolution in, regarding childcare as a, you know, a critical and needed service provided by, many times by small business owners working out of their homes. And so, I'd like to add that to the agenda to discuss.
Okay, need to see thumbs up for anybody who wants to add to the agenda that discussion? Okay, that receives majority support.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. All right. Consent Calendar. I'll start by asking if there's anything, oh, sorry.
Oh, it's good.
Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 7.3.
Yeah, so it's just good. Okay, pull 7.3. Okay, I'm going to go to public comment next. I should go here. Okay, so 7.3 is pulled, so that means we're addressing 7.1, 2, and 4 right now. And do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on any of those consent calendar items?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing public comment on those three. And ready for a motion, if anybody would like.
Motion moved.
Okay. Motion moved by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Bracco to approve 7.1, 0.2, and 0.4 of the consent calendar.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that receives unanimous approval. 7.3, Councilmember Klein, do you want to start with why you pulled it, or?
Just to vote on it.
Oh, to vote on it separately? Okay, fine. No, no, nothing to say? Okay.
I have something to, I have a discussion to say about that.
A discussion about 7.3?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So in 2021, we made city history for being the first Gilroy City Council to recognize June as LGBTQ Pride Month. Raising the pride flag at Gilroy City Hall has showed the region and the world that where one small step, Gilroy is still moving forward. One of the purposes behind raising this flag is to heighten awareness of the LGBTQ Pride Month, as well as celebrate diversity, equity, social justice, and inclusion.
We're aware. We don't, we're aware. We were all here.
Okay.
So, no, this is, this is so.
No, I'm using my, I'm using my moment right now. Thank you.
It's not a moment. It's if you have a question, if there's something you're challenging. You're making statements.
This is a part of discussion and comments. It's perfectly.
Why don't we just take a vote and see if there's an issue?
Mayor, point of order, he has a right to speak and make a statement or ask questions.
Yes, ask questions, absolutely. But this is not regarding this item being pulled.
He also has a right to make a statement.
It is on the agenda. I am allowed to make comments.
Please continue.
Today, you can find year-round support and pride for the LGBTQ plus members of our community from our local public library, nonprofits, county, and county board of education. My call to action is for, is to the Gilroy Unified School District, who have never raised a pride flag in June at the district offices or any school site. All children should be free to attend school in a safe and inclusive environment, free from discrimination. Civil rights laws and California Education Code sections contribute to such environments. The lack of awareness, understanding of issues facing LGBTQ plus children and youth have contributed to higher rates of school dropout, academic failure, suicide, and school disengagement. Education regarding LGBTQ plus issues increases understanding and cultivates respect for LGBTQ students and cultivates a culture of allyship. Thank you, and with that, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve this item.
Okay.
I have a question.
Councilmember Tovar.
Sorry. No, thank you, Councilmember Hilton. As the council member who championed this initiative, I just have a question for you. What you're, what you're asking is for this Gilroy Unified School District to, to raise a flag, correct? Is that what I heard?
No.
Yeah, you heard that.
Yeah, I heard that correctly.
But your mo, but the motion is just to approve 7.3?
No, no, I was just asking a question.
But you did hear that?
Yeah. Okay. No, I just think I can do to help you on that. I think that's.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I appreciate your leadership in this, too.
Yeah. The, the motion on the floor is to, well, it's not even a motion on the floor. It hasn't been a second. So.
Oh, was that your motion?
Yes.
He made a motion to approve 7.3.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Hilton to approve 7.3, which is simply what's in our packets, and seconded by Councilmember Armandares. So now there's further discussion. Uh huh. Yes.
Yes, as when we originally heard this, I do not support it. I, I don't believe any other flag other than the American flag, the city flag, and the state of California flag. Those flags unite us as Americans, as Californians, and Gilroians. All other flags, I believe, divide us. I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Okay. Let me go to public comment.
I have one speaker card, and it's Ron Kirkish.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm against this ordinance, too. I was originally, and I'm even more so now. Because of this recent problem that we've had in the Middle East, we've seen all kinds of protests and riots. And what bothers me intensely is that we are seeing the LGBTQ community supporting Hamas, the terrorists. Is that the kind of flag that we should be flying? A flag that supports terrorists in our country? And has done so many bad things. So I'm against it, and I'm even more so against it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. So we, we have a motion and a second. If there are no other comments by council members, we can take a roll call vote.
The motion was made by Councilmember Hilton, followed by, seconded by Councilmember Armandares. Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, that passes. Item eight, bids, one thing I do want to say, I thought I heard comments up here when a member of the public was speaking. I just want to make sure that nobody speaks while someone else is speaking. Okay, thank you. Okay, item 8.1, purchase of four Dodge Durango Police Pursuit Vehicles via, via Alameda County Tag-On Bid Process, Master Contract Number 902035, in the amount of $229,204. Leanne will give us the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. Tonight, the item before you is to replace four police pursuit vehicles that are aging in the city's fleet. This was included in our budget that was adopted this past June, but as you know, through our purchasing process, even though it's included in the budget, once we're going to make the specific purchase, we need to return to council with the specific details on the particular purchase. So that's tonight's item. We recently received notification of a short window to place the order for four 2024 police pursuit vehicles under a Tag-On Bid Process from Alameda County. Placing the order now will allow us to receive the vehicles in July of 2024. There's a long lead time for these vehicles to be purchased, ordered, and then delivered to the city. The Fleet Division has been working with the police department on strategically replacing vehicles that have reached the end of their useful life. As you know, police vehicles are heavily utilized, and they experience significant wear and tear. The Fleet Division services and repairs these police vehicles to the best of their ability, but sometimes they reach that point where they just have to be replaced, and that's this purchase here tonight. We put these, budget, we budgeted these vehicles for replacement in fiscal year '25, but in order to place the order now, we have to move forward with a purchase at this time, which involves a budget amendment that is on the agenda tonight as well. Due to the limited availability of police pursuit vehicles, we researched cooperative bidding processes available to local government agencies like Gilroy, so that we could take advantage of the purchasing power and get the best price for these vehicles. The Tag-On Bid through Alameda County offered us just that. Any dealer can compete in this competitive bidding process. However, they have to have a very competitive pricing structure for the dealer to be awarded the bid. They will focus on volume of sales as a way to achieve their sales goals. So they offer the competitive pricing as a result. So my Jeep Chrysler Dodge Ram in Salinas was awarded the Alameda County bid following this competitive bidding process. So at this time, we think this is the best option for Gilroy to pursue, to get these vehicles in an expeditious manner. And we want to remain with the Dodge Durango Police Pursuit Vehicles, because that helps us achieve consistency with our patrol fleet, which allows our mechanics to be able to plan and be trained and be able to repair these vehicles more easily. And we don't have too many different vehicles that they're working on. The purchase will be for four 2024 Dodge Durango Pursuit Vehicles. The price per vehicle is $57,250.51, for a total expenditure of $229,204. The profit markup is a very competitive $2,500 per vehicle, and we've been working with the government sales manager at my Jeep Chrysler Dodge Ram in Salinas, and just this order for these vehicles is now pending. We did, we did budget $340,000 for the four vehicles in the budget, and this accounts for all the outfitting that has to occur with the vehicle once the vehicle is received, the lighting, the siren, the PD logo, et cetera. The pricing leaves sufficient funds in this budget to complete the required outfitting. And so, once these, purchase of these vehicles is obtained, we will charge those to the fleet fund. And we did have a budget amendment included, as I mentioned, and that's just because we have to pull the money forward into fiscal year '24 in order to open the purchase order, to place the order. But the vehicles won't be received until fiscal year '25, so we'll carry the funds back to fiscal year '25, because the vehicles won't be received until after July, and that's when the actual funds will be expended. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Leanne, I think you know where I'm going with this. So we're looking at $229, $230,000. And I understand there's a competitive bid process, but I'm looking at the revenue that the city of Salinas is going to make off of this compared to what the city of Gilroy is not going to make off of this sale, right? Unless I miss it somewhere, I didn't see a comparison of the different prices or the different quotes that we got from the different dealerships. My concern is if Gilroy was $1,000 more than Salinas, and, you know, I would rather the money stay in Gilroy, so.
We do try to use our local dealerships whenever possible, but with the police pursuit vehicles, only certain dealerships have access to these competitive purchasing bids and the ability to acquire the, you know, these specialized police pursuit vehicles. So my Jeep Chrysler in Salinas is one of the dealerships that has a governmental salesperson who has been able to obtain the ability to purchase these more specialized police pursuit vehicles. These are not just your run-of-the-mill Dodge Durango that you can purchase off a lot. These are very special, they have, these vehicles have some differences, and so they're not necessarily available from every dealership. So that's why we use the Tag-On Bid process to get the best price.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone from the pub, let's open public comment on this, is what I'd like to do.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. Back to council, or either?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made to approve by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Marks. And it will be for both. We can do that in one motion, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Approve the purchase and adopt the budget amendment.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that passes unanimously, unanimously, and that brings us to item Yes, all right. That passes unanimously unanimously, and that brings us to item nine, public hearings. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending Chapter 30, Article, what is that, 54?
14.
14, okay. My Roman numerals. Of the Gilroy City Code.
I'm sorry, 54, you're right.
Oh, it is? I was right. Okay. Gilroy City Code relating to accessory dwelling units, 23-05. Okay, Erin Freitas should be giving us the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. Tonight's item is a request for a zoning ordinance update to chapter, Chapter 30, Article 54, regarding accessory dwelling units, to propose amendments to be consistent with state law. Last year, two state bills were passed, SB 897 and AB 2221, which became effective the first of this year. These included modifications to the ADU state law, including most significantly, the allowed height increase from 16 feet to 18 feet if close to major transit, and to not apply development standards such as the front setback for at least an 800-square-foot ADU. A new bill, AB 976, recently passed and will be effective the first of next year, which removes owner occupancy requirements, so we are proposing to include that change with these updates as well. On November 2nd, the proposed ADU amendments were presented at the planning commission meeting. There was no public comment received. The commission had questions regarding removing the deed restriction, front setback, encroachment, and changes that could be made to the ADU size. Staff informed the commission that the modifications proposed were to be consistent with state law, and the ADU maximum size did not change from 1,000 square feet, as that is compliant with state law and what was previously approved by council. The commission passed the recommendation for council to adopt the ADU ordinance amendments. This graphic is just to illustrate the type of ADUs that are allowed here. They're shown in orange. You could have a detached ADU from the primary dwelling, one that is attached. It could be an interior conversion on any level. It could be above a garage, or it could be a conversion of a garage or accessory structure. This is a summary list of significant changes that we are proposing. Currently, separate conveyance of an ADU is not allowed, but we are amending this to allow only per Section 65852.26A in the state law, which is just regarding nonprofits. Deed restrictions. Currently, the zoning ordinance requires a deed restriction for all ADUs and JADUs. However, state law only says local agencies may require a deed restriction for a JADU. In staff's experience, the deed restriction has been a deterrent to streamline ADUs, as it requires an owner to prepare a legal description, have their document notarized, and then reported with Santa Clara County. Since drafting the staff report, we have further researched and reached out to other jurisdictions in Santa Clara County and confirmed that none of the jurisdictions require deed restriction for ADUs, and about half require deed restriction for JADUs. Staff is proposing to remove the deed restriction requirement and request an affidavit instead, which also aligns with a program in the 2023 housing element to incentivize incentivize ADU production and accelerate and streamline the process for approving ADUs. Owner occupancy, we are, it will no longer be required due to AB 976, so this is proposed to be removed. The number of ADU section has been revised to match the language directly from state law, as this has been an area that HCD has commented on with other recent reviews of jurisdictions' ADU ordinances. The size for attached or internal conversions has been amended to remove size restrictions for internal conversions, conversions which does not exist in state law. The language has been revised for attached ADUs to be a maximum of 50% of existing primary dwellings, but at least an 850-square-foot one-bedroom or 1,000-square-foot two-or-more bedroom, as in state law. And height maximums have been amended to increase the allowed height for detached units from 16 feet to 18 feet if within a half mile of high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop. A high-quality transit corridor means a corridor with a fixed bus route with intervals no longer than 15 minutes. This includes Bus 68 along Monterey Road, so Monterey Road is considered a high-quality transit corridor. A major transit stop includes a rail station, which will be the Gilroy Caltrain Station. The 18-foot maximum height is also allowed for multi-story, multifamily properties regardless of the location. And front yard setbacks have been amended to not preclude an 800-square-foot ADU with four-foot side and rear setbacks. The JADU language was amended. If a JADU shares a bathroom with the primary dwelling unit, an interior entry to the main living area is required. And lastly, definitions were added for high-quality transit corridor, major transit stop, and objective standards. So following tonight's meeting, if the ordinance is introduced, it will return to council for adoption at the next regular meeting on December 4th and become effective 30 days following the adoption. Staff will then submit the adopted ADU ordinance to HCD for review for compliance with state law. And in conclusion, staff is recommending that the city council make a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance, and introduce an ordinance at the city council of the City of Gilroy amending Chapter 30, Article 54, relating to accessory dwelling units, and find that it is statutorily exempt from review from CEQA 15282H. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Yes, I see councilmembers lined up with questions. I just want to say, before we get into questions, though, for the public, that with the exception of the deed restriction portion on the summary of changes, everything here is, in fact, state mandate. It is not a matter of choice really for the city council if we're going to be compliant with state mandates. Okay? Councilmember Marks?
Yes, thank you for the report. It was very informative. Explain what deed restrictions we're getting rid of.
So, well, the deed restrictions, they stated that ADUs could not separately convey from the primary dwelling, that they it stated that they couldn't do separate conveyance, they couldn't have short-term rentals less than 30 days, and they couldn't, they would have to have owner occupancy for JADUs. So we would be removing that requirement of a deed restriction and requiring a signed affidavit by the property owner that states those same things, just not doing it as a deed restriction.
So then they can have a tenant in there less than 30 days?
No.
Or no?
No, they still would sign the affidavit that says that they cannot have short-term rentals for less than 30 days.
Okay.
It's just the difference of having to record it on their deed versus just signing that statement that the city holds.
Okay. And explain to me the front yard setback again. Let's see, it was, yes. So someone could put an ADU in their front yard?
So they have to be able to build at least an 800-square-foot ADU. If they can't, they first would have to follow the front setback standard, so they would have to see if they could build that in the rear and follow the right guidelines. If they can't build an 800-square-foot ADU following all of the other guidelines, then they would be allowed to encroach into the front setback.
How far would they have to be set back from the sidewalk?
There is no distance.
There's no distance?
They could be up to the property line.
Okay, and that's the state law?
That is the state law.
Assuming it can't be accommodated in some other way.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll go then, if no one else, no one else is on my board with questions, and I have questions on the deed restriction, so I'll follow up with Councilmember Marks' question. Can you, can you tell me, Erin, why, I know you said you looked into other cities, why do, why, what is the reason for having a deed restriction on a junior ADU and not on a normal, regular ADU?
I believe that the others were doing that with a JADU because of the owner occupancy requirements that were required for JADUs, but now that's going away, so that the whole deed restriction topic might even potentially go away in the future.
I know, but I'm going to hit that one with a little more challenge, because that is not required by state, so this is a choice we're making here. And I'm concerned that not have, if you have any restrictions on a piece of property, and it's not recorded on the deed, then when somebody goes to check title at the county level, then those restrictions are not there. You have to go to the city to know that those restrictions are there, and if it's not from the title company, then your title insurance doesn't help you. So I would hate to see the city be in any way complicit with making it more risky for people. Eventually, they'll they'll get caught, so to speak. I mean, this will come out eventually, but not after someone's made a deposit, an escrow, and incurred legal fees, and many other things that could come about. And I find it, I just find it personally difficult to to assert, to say that when someone is planning to build an ADU, which is a major project, hundreds of thousands of dollars, that the deal breaker for them would be that they have to record it with the county. That doesn't make any sense. So that's why I'm thinking to err on the side of caution, which would be to give successor property owners, including when somebody passes away and property's inherited and people don't know what documents exist. If it's only an affidavit, I mean, you have to find and know that it's there or think to go to the city, that not everybody does. So it just seems to me an extra level of protection that doesn't cost anything that we do require a deed restriction when somebody might be buying property thinking they're going to make an Airbnb out of that ADU, and you can't. It's not allowed, and they won't know that till they get down the road, unless somebody tells them. So.
I understand.
Is it?
Okay. I mean, it is, these are requirements that are in our zoning ordinance, that the whole city has to follow, whether whether it's recorded or not. And as far as the separate sale, I can't see how anybody even would go forward or how they could sell an ADU separately. It's not a legal law. They wouldn't be able to pass title with that, so.
No, but that's another thing the deed restriction could tell them, too, is that you can only sell this separately as allowed by state law, and that will be allowed. There are ways that that's going to be allowed, effective January 1st of 2024, correct?
That's not quite true. They, this, the new state law, there is one, 1033, that will, it's allowing cities to create an ordinance to allow separate sale conveyance, which would be condo mapping these ADUs, but the city would have to initiate an ordinance to allow that.
Right.
So we haven't been doing that yet.
Okay, so that's all I'm going to say on the subject, and just let the council know that I'm I'm leaning towards using the deed restrictions, because I just think that that is the prudent thing to do. Okay, Councilmember Armadere?
Just a follow-up question to yours, Mayor. Is there a difference in how or who would enforce a restriction in, is the difference between a tie, deed enforced or and an affidavit? Is there a difference in who would enforce that or how it would be enforced?
I, I mean, code enforcement with the city is going to enforce our zoning ordinance and could enforce, well, what's on the title. I don't really see a difference, actually, in enforcement. I think it could go, I mean, Andy maybe could mention or comment, but I'm sure it could hold with any lawyer enforcing the restriction or the zoning ordinance.
If I may, I suspect the main difference is what the mayor was alluding to, which is that with a deed restriction, there is automatically notice when there's a transfer, rather than the actual enforcement mechanism.
Right. Hopefully, it doesn't lead to the need to enforce. Any other, it's a public hearing, so I got to open the public hearing, but I'm looking to councilmembers first. Okay, so public hearing, opening at 7:03 PM. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public hearing at 7:03. Okay, so first is, if there's, is there a discussion? Tom? Oh, no discuss, go ahead. You want to make a motion? Go ahead. Make a motion to?
Introduce the, introduction, first reading of the ordinance.
Excuse me, but the first motion really needs to be to read the ordinance by title.
That's what he said.
Did you say that? I didn't hear it.
Use your microphone. That's okay, he's not using his microphone.
By title only.
Okay, so do we have a second to read the motion by title only?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Klein, seconded by Councilmember Tovar, to read by title only and waive further reading.
Councilmember Armadere?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. That passes unanimously. I'd like to make a motion that we, oh, you have to do, sorry, I keep forgetting that.
It's all right, Madam Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending the Gilroy City Code, Chapter 30, zoning, Article 40?
54.
54.
54.
L is 50.
54 regarding accessory dwelling units.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 30, Article 54 of the Gilroy City Code relating to accessory dwelling units, as suggested by staff, except for, I'm, my motion is except for the deed restrictions. I would like that paragraph to flip, and I know Sharon can read it exactly for those who aren't clear, because it's a very simple change in the redline draft that's in our packets, that makes it so that the deed, a deed restriction would have to say, can't rent for less, for fewer than 30 days, does not have to be owner occupied, and cannot transfer the pro, the ADU or junior ADU separate from the piece of real estate, except as allowed by state law. So that needs a second to go anywhere.
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by, sorry?
I already did.
Oh, you already seconded it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So Sharon, do you want to read for us exactly what that is, so that everybody's clear on what they're voting on?
Sure. Yeah. Thanks. So if you look at Section 30.54.20, subsection C under that, prior to the issuance of a building permit for an accessory dwelling unit and/or a junior accessory dwelling unit, the owner must, so basically, it's review, removing, signing affidavit, and then revert it back to recorded de restriction. So that would be the change as proposed. And then the remainder would be as proposed by staff.
As you already say, which is to remove the, it does not have to be owner occupied.
Correct.
And that it can be sold separately in accordance with how the state says it can be done.
Correct, yes. The remainder will, as shown in the packet.
Okay. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Armadere?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. All right, that was unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Unfinished business, we have none. Under new business, renaming the downtown pop-up park and installing a plaque in honor of Donald Elvis Prado. And Bryce is going to give us the staff report.
Nice to meet you, Mayor and council. So on June 5th, there's a council initiative agenda item to consider renaming the downtown pop-up park in honor of Donald Elvis Prado. Their proposal has, as far as staff is aware, a renaming of the park and install memorial plaque paid for by a private party or parties. The proposed plaque inscription that we have features Mr. Prado's name, his date of birth, and date of his passing, as well as a message, I believe, is created from his family, that's on the screen here and contained inside the staff report as well. The, on this slide is an example of the proposed platform, which is a, essentially a bronze cast plaque on a pedestal mounting. The location, we've identified on the map on the screen, is located along Monterey Avenue in the grassy area. The request is to place it on the podium inside the grassy area. There are multiple possible locations. This one was identified just for maximum amount of visibility along Monterey Road. So alternatives, council may modify or reject the proposed renaming and memorial plaque. Fiscal impact, there is no financial impact, just in-kind services are proposed for installation should council choose to approve the plaque. So recommendations, for council to approve the renaming of the downtown pop-up park to the Donald Elvis Prado Park, and the installation of a privately funded memorial plaque. Michael, please, presentation.
Okay, thank you, Bryce. Okay, thank you, Bryce. Yes, looking to council members, and Councilmember Armendaris, was that you? Okay.
That's me. Excuse me. So, I mean, I support this and appreciate his, Donald's contribution to our community. I'm just wondering, if we're not bearing the cost of the plaque, is that true? It's going to be privately fundraised for?
That's from my understanding.
Could we recommend something less boring, like an image of him that his family might choose? A small image of him to be put on the plaque, is that possible?
I would have to defer to council.
Yeah, okay, cool. Anything else from council, yeah, Councilmember Tovar?
And if it's already been, you know, I'm not a wordsmith, Bryce, but going back to the reading, it says the age of seven, use the number seven. Should we read, should we spell that out with the actual seven?
So we're taking the inscription as provided by the person that's bringing it. So it's up to council if there's a certain condition or term that you want to put on the inscription, but.
Yeah, and I don't mean to nitpick, but I think you should maybe spell it out. That's just my thought. And I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Okay, I need to take public comment first, guys. Okay, opening public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this?
I received no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. All right, so then with that, we have a motion by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Armendaris, and.
This is a digital vote.
Okay.
Mayor, I mean, sorry, again, are we going to leave it the way it's written? With the number seven or spelt out?
What was your motion?
Well, I mean, for approval, but I'm hoping we can just make that small change of, you know, spell it out, you know. Please.
Yes.
Just send me a message?
Yeah.
And I'll make any changes as soon as I can.
Perfect, thank you, okay.
So it's digital voting, everyone. All right, that passed unanimously.
Thank you, Deanna.
No one's here from his family, I don't see, so.
I told them they didn't need to.
Yeah, well, they don't need to, just, yeah, all right, thanks. Okay, it's not that late, so we are going to go straight into Item 11.2, which is Santa Teresa Fire District Station update, and Jimmy Forbes is going to give us the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to present the background concerning the Santa Teresa Fire Station and some of the things that have occurred in recent years and even going farther back to how even the thought of the station came about and what our opportunities are going forward to actually add the fourth fire station, which we've talked about for quite some time. I will, I'm actually going to say this three times when we go through this presentation. I'm going to show you this slide three times. We all agree we need a fourth fire station. I don't think we're going to spend any time talking about how that's, it's not necessary, it's not needed. But the harder question will be how will you pay for it? So that's where I'll focus the majority of our recommendations to council and direction we're seeking from council is, you know, we all agree we need it, but it comes with some fiscal challenges as well. To give you some background, we were all much, much younger in 2000 when the first indication was that the Santa Teresa area needed a fourth fire station. We all agreed that that's a fully staffed station is needed. Again, the question is how to pay for it. The city has had a plan to staff this station, and that was included in your recently adopted budget. But it has been, had some obstructions, some challenges in getting the staffing onboard and able to staff that fire station. I'm going to talk about those as well. In 2000, the master plan of fire services predicted the need of the fourth station 23 years ago. And then in 2004, the city conducted a public facilities fee study, identifying and attempting to fund the construction of the fourth fire station. And the 2005 environmental impact report for the Glen Loma area, which is just out by Santa Teresa, indicated that in order to offset the increased population on that side of town, we needed dedicated land for a fire station, and we needed the construction of a fire station. And in the development agreement with Glen Loma, there was an amount set with escalators over time that would help provide the capital. So the capital is there in theory, but to date, the station has not been constructed. And we'll talk a little about the situation with Glen Loma shortly. But the, going back to the 2005, 2006 agreement, it was anticipated that the entire area of Glen Loma would be built out in three to four years. We are now 18 years out, and it is still not built out. So a lot has changed since then, and that's why in 2022, the fire chief recommended, and I was here then, and we recommended to the council that we establish some type of fire station on the west side to provide some level of service. So we started out with the old teak building, which was an old recreation building, certainly not suited for long-term or, you know, some of the requirements. You need a firefighting staff to have somewhere to sleep, to shower and to eat. It was simply a building. And so that was not ever seen as a long-term solution, but it was a start in how we staffed that area. So that was just three years ago. And knowing that if we even did get a fire station constructed from Glen Loma or even by the city, we would find ourselves in a similar situation to the Sunrise Station, for those of you that remember, that was built and sat vacant for three years. And in fact, we have a picture of a sign saying this station is closed due to budget constraints. So we're repeating the cycle again, and I think at some point, probably after most of us are gone, there'll be a discussion about a fifth fire station and some of these common issues that typically occur when you try to operate a brand-new fire station. They just repeat themselves. Let's talk a little bit about going back to 2008 because even when we talk about other parts of the city and we talk about staffing, that, you know, I constantly tell you we still don't have the staffing level that we had back in 2008, even though our population has greatly grown. And I'm talking about both fire and police. As you can see, back in 2008, we had 40, you know, fire positions. And now we're still only to 38. With the recent approval of the budget, we would be up to 40. So we return to that staffing level 2008. You can see that just recently in 2020, police was at 65. And over the last few years, we've tried to increase that as well. So we've put money into both places. And then what this chart does not show you that in fiscal year 2025, two additional fire positions were approved as part of the recent budget going forward. This is the Gilroy population since 2008. It was 47,000 in 2008, and now it's well over 60,000. So as much as the population has grown, the resources, and the majority of our resources are people, has not grown in comparison. This was to tell you what could be possible if you do fund the fourth fire station. And this was the first three-month period back in the 2019, 2020 period when we did put the alternative service model in. It immediately reduced response times out there. Now, the call volume was a little bit different and things were done a little bit different, but the numbers are quite supportive that the entire system benefits from a fourth fire station. All districts, 36 seconds were reduced at that time. And we do know factually that if you have the fourth station and it's fully staffed, it helps the entire system. So again, not, nothing contentious at that point. There are a couple of ways that the fire station has been staffed on the west side, but I can tell you the two options on the right are extremely rare. It's more like the E650, which is two hours, or, sorry, two personnel for 12 hours and sometimes for 24, but only occasionally if we upstaff due to either some kind of wildland fire risk or whatever, do we get to 24 hours, three personnel. There's a lot that goes into play when we staff the fourth fire station. And the number one thing that comes into play is availability of personnel every day. Do we have the people available? And are they qualified to work over at that station in the positions we're asking them to do? We need people a lot of times to work overtime, and sometimes they're not available or, you know, circumstances just don't give us enough people to be able to do that. Extreme weather events requiring upstaffing, like I spoke of, is wildland fire. And then other planned requests that would support the need to staff. We have mandated training. We have mutual aid coverage for adjoining agencies as well. So the department gets pulled in a lot of different directions. So any discussion on staffing comes with a related discussion about finance. And I want to talk a little bit about the five-year forecast and the two-year budget you just approved. The two-year budget you just approved effective July 1st of this year included the COLAs and wage increases for almost the entire city personnel. It was the largest increases we've ever had. And that budget going out to five years incorporated those costs and how we paid for them. And we were able to make the budget balance, but in the first year alone, we only had a $600,000 surplus. And as I'll show you in the chart, when we get out the few years, we don't have a surplus at all. So when we think about how we're going to pay for things, there's no out-year surplus that we can pull from. We have to, we have to have council to make some decisions. We do have the use of one-time funds, but we have typically followed the good financial practice of using that for one-time purchases. And as we've seen over the last few years, especially in the general fund, the amount of money left over each year is getting smaller and smaller. And I think that's not a bad thing. I think that means we're providing as much service as we can with the dollars we have, but it also means you don't have, you don't save money up as fast. In fiscal year 24, it was a 65.6 general fund budget, and then council allocated $5.8 million in one-time uses. And then for public safety accounts, for 45 of the 65 million, about 64%. And then just people in general account for 67% of the city's general fund budget. So when you look at where you might be able to make priority changes or allocate resources, it's really in your people. There's just not a lot of money that goes out in supplies and services because the majority of the work we perform is done by people. Over the last four years, the city, through two different budget cycles, working with the city council, has allocated almost $10 million in additional funding for the fire department. We've purchased two new fire engines, a Type III, a Type VI engine, $2 million in this recent budget for fire station improvements. Our labor agreement with 2805 increased the general fund cost by over $800,000 annually. Breathing equipment for $857,000, station alerting, and then additional positions that we've added cost $1.1 million. The interim Santa Teresa station is $462,000. And then the increase that we've paid over those four years in overtime is $2 million. So just in the last four years, we've increased spending by about $10 million to invest in fire and public safety. The police, on the other hand, they have a total budget of $30.5 million, and they are approximately 42% of the general fund. And of that, 77% is for personnel and 52% of all general fund personnel cost. 104 FTEs, of which 50%, is, they're all in a general fund, and they take up half of the general fund as well. So some of the things that, and the reason why we bring this up is that we're going to talk more about public safety as a whole as we get down a few more slides. But when we looked at the budget that was adopted in July 1st, it's a plan. And we already know that this plan is going to need some amendments. Our first sales tax report means money we've actually gotten into stating we're going to come in close to $1 million less than what we had forecasted. And so if you take that $600,000 operating margin that we had, it's now down to a negative $400,000. And then we also have reports from the property tax assessor that the growth in property tax is slowing because of high interest rates. So these are things that right now we don't have to do a lot about, but we will return to council in December to discuss what's the update to our finances and where we find ourselves in this economy. And then this is just a reminder of the five-year forecast that you approved. There's, at the bottom line is the $600,000, then it goes to 300, and then we have very small negative operating margins in the next two out of three years, out to fiscal year 29. This is, we're going to talk a little about the original staffing plan that we included in the budget and the budget that was adopted. And as you can see, the budget called for fire staffing of 44 in fiscal year 24 and then an increase in fiscal year 25. And we also included in the city's budget message and in the presentation that the plan to hire those two firefighters were on this following premise. Given our hiring efforts and barring retirements and/or injuries, the department will be at full-budgeted staffing in the very near future. Two additional firefighters in fiscal year 25 will allow the Santa Teresa Fire Station to be staffed with a three-person engine 24/7. The staffing level will allow the department to meet demands for service, reduce response times, and increase firefighter safety. Service levels throughout the city will be consistent as the fourth station will operate like the other three existing stations. This is what we wrote in the budget message, and this is what we proposed in the budget adoption. So we're going to show you what has occurred that we believe now, even with hiring the two additional firefighters that were funded, won't get us to be able to open a fourth fire station. The plan was based on full staffing barring increased rates of retirements, resignations, and/or injuries. Injuries were experienced, but the plan did not account for having four or five employees out on long-term workers' comp leave. That's a high rate for us, but that's what we're finding ourselves right now is we just have a lot of people gone. We have all of our vacancies filled at one, but we have several firefighters not deployable, including three that are in the academy right now. They will not be up until March, so they're not deployable for quite some time. And then four, possibly five, on long-term workers' compensation leave. So the eight of our 38 firefighters are not currently available for deployment. That means 20% of our workforce isn't here. We can't use them, we can't put them in a station or put them on duty due to various, you know, ailments or just they're being, they're being trained. We also know that in the last year, vacation, family leave, as well as sick leave increases have resulted in more non-deployable personnel hours. So of the 30 firefighters we have left, we're seeing an increased use in leave time. So again, they're not available when we're trying to place them at a station. Significant increase in sick leave use in the last 12 months. From October 21st, 2021 to October 2022, the fire department used 1,725 hours of sick leave. That same period just completed in 2023, 4,593 hours of sick leave, a 266% increase in the use of sick leave in one year. We simply just don't have the people at work that day to, you know, to put them in the station. When that time is covered by another employee not already scheduled on that shift, then the coverage is in the form of overtime paid at time and a half. And this is a, this is an example of what a shift looks like. And if we talk about the five individuals that are out long-term, those are the I's down below, and the bottom below would be your Santa Teresa station. That would be your fourth station. So taking out those five, you're left with three deployable and, and really, you'd want to use your relief personnel to fill those in. But they're in training, so we don't have anybody to backfill in those positions when they're not being filled, and thus we rely on overtime. In fiscal year 08, we had 44 authorized positions total. And fiscal year 24, 41. And then we have 40 of those filled, but only, even including the division chiefs and such, we only have 33 available for deployment. Current status of employees, we've attempted to staff the Santa Teresa station with three-person crews when not creating excessive overtime. There's times when we've just paid the overtime because of, you know, service demand or risk associated with not staffing that fire station. We've also upstaffed it during periods of increased fire risk, mostly during the summer. And then, but the goal is, and it always has been, to staff that station 24/7 with a three-person crew as we identified in the fiscal year 24 budget. And then we, at the minimum, try to staff with 12 hours and then 24 hours when we can. Okay, I'm halfway through. 40 slides. Overtime requires significant overtime shift work to maintain operations. Operating anything ongoing relying on overtime only is not sustainable. As you can see, we see increases in probably workers' comp claims, sick leave days because of excessive overtime. So that's not a long-term solution. It's something you use when you, you need to staff it because you have to at that point. And in the first quarter alone, we spent over a half million dollars on fire overtime. If we continue to do that, we'll be over $1.6 million in fire overtime by the end of the year, and we budgeted $1.1 million, so we'll be about a half million dollars over. The other thing to point out is when we hired or we put in the budget, the hiring of two additional firefighters, we reduced the amount that we budgeted for fire overtime down to $700,000. So if those two that we hired don't make a significant impact, we'll be over about $1 million in fire overtime in '25. The overtime has exponentially increased over the past decade. If you can see as far back as fiscal year 14 and 15, $300,000 on fire overtime. And fiscal year 20, it was $1.6 million. So we continue to put resources into trying to staff these stations, but even the overtime isn't, isn't getting us there. All right, current status for fire services. Gilroy has three permanent and one interim station. And then we have 12 stations within 20 miles around us. I don't make that as a service claim. I take that as a presence claim. And some of those stations are able to help on a regular basis, and others are more seasonal, what have you. But I point that out because we're not alone down here in South County. We do have neighbors, and we are not unprotected when we have major catastrophic issues, no more than when our firefighters go to San Jose to help for mutual aid situations. So it's a, it's a two-way road, and we try to make sure that those, that evens out considerably when we have to do that. Let's talk a little bit about response times. And our response time standard is measured on the 90th percentile, not the average. So it's time that it takes for responses on 90% of the calls received. So you will have outliers of incidents and such. And so that standard tries to, you know, account for that. The always goal is 7 minutes and 30 seconds. And right now, we're at 8 minutes and 55 seconds as our average response time for the 90% throughout the system as of October 31st. This number was recommended by the consultant in the standards of coverage document, but it is not realistic, and we will not be able to achieve it even with a fifth fire station, even with the fully-staffed Santa Teresa station crew for 24 hours. station, even with the fully-staffed Santa Teresa station crew for 24 hours. So, when we talk about having an impact on response time, sure, there'll be an impact, but we will not meet the 7 minutes and 30 seconds. No other fire agency in the county has met their response time goal, and no other, no other fire department in the county approaches actual response times of 7 minutes and 30 seconds. Fire services calls. The demand for fire services has increased dramatically over the past decade. As you can see, 4,099 calls in 2012, and 2022, 7,267. There's no doubt that the amount of work has gone up considerably, and the amount of resources needed to cover that work is also needed to go up. This is a district call volume. So, as you can see, Santa Teresa through July through October has received about 12% of the call volume, and Sunrise with the other 12, Chestnut and Los Otomos receive the bulk of service demand, service calls. That doesn't mean that others don't go into other districts to help, but it just means that's the origination of where the call comes from. They tend to, like I said, they will, they will increase 3% or even more, especially if more houses get built in Giori, which is most likely. We do believe that updating some of these district boundaries may be helpful in balancing the call volume, so all of it's not out of one part of town. But that's more of an analysis that needs to be done. Fire district response times. Los Otomos has our best response time at 7 minutes and 51, but then when you go to the other districts, it does go up. And even Santa Teresa, when staffed, is still the slowest response time. Many factors come into play because of that. And then when you see when it's unstaffed, it's even higher. So, that's, that's what the data shows. Further talking about actual response times, Giori is at 8:55. This is from the LAFCO report, except for the Giori part, which we updated. And you can see Mill Peters in Morgan Hill does not have a response time standard, and others have, you know, Santa Clara County Fire has 6 minutes and 30 seconds. They're at 8:21. So, we understand that the response time goal is important, but as you can see, no, no agency actually meets it. And then when we talk a lot about what kind of incident types, this is known EMS is the majority of the calls. Good intent is calls that maybe people thought something happened or was good intentions on the call that didn't really merit a response. And then only 5% is fires. And so that's kind of important to remember out on the west side of town with newer construction. The building codes are a lot more stringent for fire protection than maybe in the older parts of town. But nonetheless, we are, we have turned into a medical response agency, and that is almost what all of our work goes to. Current fire status on the fire services. A lot of things do impact fire responses, and we have increased traffic in town. Again, available staffing, multiple calls for service occurring simultaneously, and we'll talk a little bit about ambulances and how that comes into play. And then reliability of neighboring agencies' resource availability to aid. We are not the only city in the county that's having ambulance issues, and so that impacts when we can help others, and that impacts when others can help us. And then severity of calls, size of necessary response, and then I'll talk a little bit more in a minute about ambulance response times. In the past, we have tried to send strike teams out to assist throughout the state of California, and over this time, we have not done that and don't intend to do that going forward because we have a hard time staffing our own stations. And although that's good experience and good training for firefighters, we have to take care of home first before we venture out. Okay. Medical call transports, ambulance service. This has been occurring over the last few years, and county response time is significantly delayed throughout the county. And delays into Giori of over 30 minutes waiting on an ambulance is not that uncommon. A few weeks ago, myself and Chief Wyatt submitted a letter to the county executive concerning discrepancy and response times and other service issues. In the urban areas, a response time for ambulance is about 12 minutes. In South County, it's over 30 minutes. We found that to be unacceptable. One of the things that the ambulance provider changed, that the county permitted, is that they suspended automatic dispatch of ambulances. So, it now requires our fire department to go on scene, and they have to stay there until the ambulance gets there. And that means they can't go to another call or until an ambulance comes. And if that ambulance takes 30 minutes to get there, they have to wait, even though that's really the ambulance company's job. So, that stress on the system is being pushed down on our fire department. And then use of basic life support ambulances. If we have a fire crew, paramedic has to go with the patient to the hospital, the entire engine goes, and has to be able to transport that paramedic back to the next call. But that engine is essentially out of service until, you know, the ambulance arrives and the patient gets transported to the hospital. So, it does, again, if you're waiting 30 minutes and then you have to do the transport, you can see the kind of stress it puts on the, on the fire department. Service improvement, short-term options. Oh, and I will say, I'm sorry, that we did not get an official response from the county executive, but Chief Wyatt did receive a call from the director of the ambulance service, and with some indication they're going to try to make some adjustments. But we don't have anything in writing, and so we'll await to get a formal response from the county. So, what are we doing in the short term? We have one vacancy right now in the fire department, and as part of the fiscal year '25 budget adoption, it was the addition of two. We're going to do those recruitments all together, do all three of them. By the time two new firefighters get onboard, it'll be closer to the next fiscal year. But getting them in training and to the academy if necessary would be helpful going forward. Pilot policy changes. Reviewing overtime leave use and policies to reduce the use of overtime to staff a full-time station, which we know staffing a full-time station with overtime is not sustainable. And then auto aid and mutual aid agreements. Update those agreements to ensure that coverage is maximized, and I should say equitable, and that we're not going out more than necessary, and that it's equal. Interim fire station. We're continuing to construct the interim fire station. We did have bids on that project last week. We will, we're still reviewing those bids, but once we get a date determined contractor onboard, we'll have a delivery date of the temporary fire station, and we'll report that to council and the public so they know. And then explore additional alternative service delivery models. As you saw earlier, when the first rendition of the ASM out at Santa Teresa, it did reduce response times quite considerably. And then research other possible alternative service models. So, we have identified that adding the two firefighters in the fiscal year '25 budget does not seem to help us achieve our goal of getting the fourth fire station operational. And so, we believe in order to have enough relief personnel, you really need to go up to probably 45 firefighters because of the use of leave and the long-term disability conditions. And so that'd be two captains, three engineers, two firefighters, which we will be hiring, and what that cost is around $1 million. 45 is the number because we are averaging 2.5 absences per day. And with the additional workers' compensation leave, we need three relief personnel per shift. And right now, we don't have that. The permanent fire station. Complete construction of a permanent station just this afternoon. The city attorney issued a letter to the Glen Loma Corporation asking for a, Andy, I'll let you say the words if I don't get them right, but more of a demand of what the plan is basically going forward. For those of you that are familiar with the Glen Loma Development Agreement, Glen Loma is to have that fourth station built and ready to operate by the issuance of the 11th hundred permit. Like I said previously, that was supposed to happen within three or four years of the agreement, and that obviously did not happen. And so we're wondering what Glen Loma's long-term plan is to get that station built and ready for us to staff. We continue to work on getting that site. Glen Loma will not let us have the land yet, and so I think it's important that we all understand where they stand and what their plan is over the next couple of years. But we did receive $2.3 million in cash from Glen Loma in lieu of building out the McCutcheon Park. So, we have some funds on hand, but not the entire amount to construct the new fire station. Other long-term options. Standards of coverage review. The current standards of coverage was adopted before the implementation, or the adoption of the 2040 general plan, and so that should be updated to reflect any changes that were made in zoning or building or development in Giori, and also take into effect. It's just easy to be updated because a lot of things have changed in the last five years. The recent LAFCO 2023 countywide fire service review made a recommendation to a more regional approach, and it states that a cooperative fire service model that maximizes utilization of the combined three fire agency jurisdictions, resources, which is Cal Fire County and Giori, is the best alternative going forward for efficient and cost-effective delivery of fire services in South Santa Clara County. That was the recommendation from LAFCO. Service increase funding. So, we're getting now to the point, how do you pay for this? If you want a fourth fire station and knowing you need amount of personnel that is a level that you currently don't have, how do you, how do you pay for that? And so we, we don't have a lot of options, but we do have a few. We have talked about grants, and grants are typically not for personnel. I am familiar with the SAFER grant, and been in a community that utilized that grant, but that is typically to prevent a reduction in fire personnel, not an increase. And then we have been able to get some equipment grants, like for breathing apparatus and such, but nothing that really gives us a sustainable operating funding source for the long term. We, in our, in our work on this, looks closely at what some other agencies have done to be able to increase their, their fire and public safety protection. And several communities in the Bay Area have done what they call public safety sales tax for both police and fire. A quarter cent, or 0.25%, actually, would generate about $4.3 to $4.9 million. We identified the need for a million to a million five to open the fourth fire station. That would also enable us to adjust our police staffing to also keep up with the population growth, but also to provide money for infrastructure improvements. Our fire stations need seismic retrofits, and in general, all of our public safety infrastructure still needs continual investment, and one-time money is very hard to come by for those kinds of costs. Public safety sales tax aren't always easy to pass. They do take-
Are you taking questions now?
I know. We'll take them at the end.
I think he'd like to take them at the end. He's almost done.
Yeah, I'm almost done. And if you can remember the slide number, I can go back-
Yeah, I've been writing the slide number down.
0.25 generates about $4.3 to $4.9. It takes a 2/3 majority vote. It is a special tax, and we would propose that if this is something the council directs staff to do, we could begin work on that for the November 2024 ballot. And one thing to remember is that of that $4.3 to $4.9, about half of that gets paid by out-of-towners, tourist visitors. Giori has a big advantage in being a somewhat regional business center when you think about our car dealerships and outlets and Costco, that we get people from out-of-town shopping here, so we capture that. So, it wouldn't, you know, it'd be helped that it was paid for by others. Some other cities have been able to do this. A public safety parcel tax. That's a much tougher one to pass than a, than a sales tax, but it is the same threshold with 2/3 majority, greater stability. It doesn't have economic fluctuations. And then we have to establish a growth factor, knowing how much are we going to grow over time so that the costs grow appropriately and proportionally. The last option that we are not recommending council go forward with, we did just approve a budget that started, you know, July 1st. And given that 70-some percent of all of our general fund cost goes to public safety, in order to increase that number without a newer revenue source, you would have to make reductions in other departments. And that's not something we recommend, but that would include recreation planning, non-utility engineering work, general fund streets and park landscaping, and non-squirm staff. Cost reductions. Again, you know, the budget was approved with minimal operating margin. We do not have excess, excess ongoing funds and any outgoing expenditures to be funded from reductions to other ongoing expenditures. And most reductions are currently funded general fund positions. Again, we don't spend a lot of money on services supplies. And the amount may vary depending upon performance of the economy. We first need to address our revenue shortfall that we know we'll receive in sales tax, and we'll be talking about that in December. Conclusion. We all want a fourth fire station. The question remains, how do you pay for it? The current fire staffing approach that we implemented in the budget and recommended and you adopted would work if the three academy firefighters complete their training, all employees on workers' comp leave return, and sick leave usage returns to fiscal year '22 levels. Those are the things that have created the situation where our current staffing plan doesn't work. If no leave to change, leave usage happens, staffing will continue to be a challenge. It'll be, more personnel will be needed to offset absences. Overtime use is not sustainable for an ongoing fire station operation. It leads to more injuries, sick leave use, and employee burnout. The next steps for staff are, we will continue issuing to council and the public weekly reports on staffing and station operating hours, and we will give you an update on long-term disability status and the status of our fire academy graduations and also our recruitments. And then monthly reports to the city council reflecting any direction that you provide us tonight. So, in summary, the recommended staff direction is 0.25 sales tax ballot measure for funding public safety service increases, explore alternative service models, including two-person responses, update the standards of coverage and fire service strategic plan, and then the fire chief to evaluate daily staffing and continue to staff the station when on-duty personnel are available to do so within existing staffing model and existing financial resources. City administrator will continue to provide fire station status reports. That concludes my presentation. I'm accompanied by Fire Chief Jim Wyatt and our Assistant City Administrator Leigh Anne McPhillips. So, I'll channel those questions and make sure the right person gets you the answer you're looking for. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. And before we get into questions, I just want to clarify on your recommendations on the slide just before, that you're not, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not saying to move forward with all, you're asking council direction to come back to council with the possibility of these things, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to make sure, because nobody is here to say we're going forward with the sales tax measure, for example. Okay. All right. That being clear, Councilmember Armendaris is the only one whose hand is raised on my screen, but I'll, I only see hers, but I'll get down, I'll get down the road. Okay. Councilmember Armendaris.
Sure. And I'll just start with these two. I know it's going to be a lengthy discussion, so hopefully I can come back. But regarding the parcel tax and the sales tax measure, in our staff report, there's language about youth services, but I don't see that on these slides.
Yeah, we didn't put that, and we didn't put infrastructure either. Our basic concern and motivation for a sales tax measure would be for personnel, but council can really guide how that works, whether that's, that was a San Carlos model where they had youth prevention, police-related services. They also had infrastructure. So, there's 100 different ways you could, you could drive that sales tax measure.
Because it's not, it's not on the recommended staff direction, right? So, there's, but you're saying you're still open to it. It was just-
Yeah. In the staff report, we're putting out all options, but right now, we're just saying, we recommend you have the discussion about the sales tax, not what it includes or doesn't include today, but we can walk you through that.
Can I just piggy, because that's a good question, and I had the same one for Jimmy earlier. So, Jimmy, can you clarify, I think for both of us, if we put, if we went the route of a sales tax measure that is for public safety, do you necessarily, I mean, you're still allowed, you need a 2/3 vote, but you're allowed to use the money for, like for the fire station itself, too, not just for-
It has to be non-discretionary, right, in a sales tax with a 2/3?
Yeah, cannot be discretionary. You can't have, the ballot language is really the-
I know.
Where the details get figured out.
Right.
Whether or not the legal analysis says it is, it's tight enough to where it doesn't become a general tax.
Right. But it could be used, what I was trying to get at is it could be used for facilities, right? It could be used for staffing, and it could be, what this youth thing is getting to is it allows for youth, it allows for use for youth prevention services, right?
Sure.
Youth services, yeah.
Well, I question it because it just says youth services in our staff report, but I wanted to know, what does that mean? What legally can be considered public safety? And youth prevention services can be, right? Okay. So, that's, that's all. Go ahead.
And then you did say it four times, right, is we all want to fill the fourth station, right? We all want to staff it. We all want to staff it. But I, and, but I noticed, too, you added police services, and where, where do we have documentation, too, about the needs, like the urgent need for police services or more police funding?
Well, I think we've had studies that we have presented to council that have stated we have lower police service and officers than almost anybody in the county. So, that has been addressed before. I believe that if you're going to generate $5 million and you need a million to a million and a half to staff the fourth fire station, you should look at trying to address two of your needs at the same time.
And those, the growth charts will be worked into the measures, into the parcel tax or into the sales tax only?
Well, we're not really pushing for the parcel tax. We're pushing more for the sales tax. So, you'll go down this path of where you can ask all those questions. We'll make all those presentations about any data or anything you need. And eventually, the council will have to decide what exactly is that ballot measure going to say.
Okay. And then last one. Would it include 911, like, operators?
It could.
If, for public safety?
It could.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Tovar, you're on the board now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy, I have a couple of questions for you, and then Chief, I have some questions for you as well. Okay. So, one- Chief, I have some questions for you as well. Okay. So going with your presentation here, I didn't see, what, what does it cost for three full-time firefighters at the Santa Teresa Station?
I believe that was 944,000?
I thought that was-
That's to get the coverage, all the coverage that you would need.
It's just under 200.
Yeah, that.
Yeah. So it's not 900, it's just under 200?
No.
Just under $200,000 per firefighter.
All right. So that's 600,000, not 900. Correct?
For three.
Right. Right. Now, Jimmy just said almost a million. I'm, I'm saying the cost is lower for the-
So we have three personnel per shift.
Got it. Okay.
On a total of nine personnel.
Okay. Got it. Good. And then Jimmy, you mentioned, I want to go back to-
You guys didn't answer that. They didn't answer that question. I'm sorry. To, to your question, you need nine personnel, right, to cover? I'm sorry. That question just wasn't answered, I don't think.
To fully staff the station.
Right.
It's a total of nine personnel.
Exactly. Because you need three per shift. There are three shifts.
This staff report is talking about the need for going beyond the, the, the 40 that is included in the fiscal year 25 budget by adding five additional.
Right. But your question was, what does it cost to fully staff? We'll ask your question again.
Again, what is it cost to, for those three additional firefighters, what's the cost for that?
Three firefighters would be just under $600,000.
Okay. That, that answers my question.
Okay.
So I was, yeah. So that wasn't the right answer that was on there. So, okay. And then Jimmy, going back, if you recall last time I mentioned Chief, I mentioned to you as well, the SAFER grant, right? And I was told, or we were told, we did apply for that. So let me just read out to the public.
That was disclosed in closed session.
I'm sorry.
That was disclosed in closed session.
Okay. But you just mentioned that that wasn't for, to fund additional staff.
Right.
Okay. So let me read what I, what I'm seeing here, and then you tell me if it's, if I'm misreading this. So the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant SAFER was created to provide funding directly to fire departments and volunteer firefighters, interested organizations to help them increase or maintain the number of trained frontline firefighters. Isn't that what we're looking for?
They receive so many applications, they get so much request for funding, they don't increase, they try to maintain. So I've been in two different cities that have had one successful grant application and one unsuccessful. And the difference was is that we were trying to maintain in my other city. And here we're trying to increase.
Okay. Got it. Because I, I see that we haven't applied for, in years for this grant. So, okay. My next question, Chief, for you, if you don't mind. When we look at the response times for Santa Teresa, I, you know, obviously I'm reading the report, do you know, I mean, you know, I'm not a firefighter, but I believe at night is when you get the volume of your calls mainly at nighttime, right?
No, our, our study demonstrated that two-thirds of our call volume were during the, the, between eight and eight, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay.
So one-third basically would continue at night.
Also one-third, after 8:00 PM to eight?
Yes.
So you're looking at one-third-
Correct.
Of those calls. Okay. Now, looking at the response times, obviously the increase that we're looking at here, when we look at sort of the delay, have we had, have we had any medical or fire calls in the Santa Teresa where the response time has impacted the outcome on the patients?
I don't have any data to show that, but you can infer that yes, if there's a delay and a significant delay in response, yes, there can be a change in the outcome.
And we're looking at possible deaths because of the outcome?
Death is a, a possibility on any given day that we have, regardless of whether it's what district it's in. But yes, if you have exceedingly long response times, either from the fire department or the ambulance, yes.
So let me be more direct on that. So have we had any deaths due to the extended response time?
I have been told by our local that there was a, a cardiac arrest that wasn't survivable. I was given the date. I checked the date. I checked five days before and the five days after. I was unable to find that. So I was unable to validate that.
Okay. But, but you're saying that that is, more than likely it did happen?
I, I-
I don't think so. I'm sorry. No, his, his answer was he couldn't validate. That's all. That means he doesn't know. He can't, okay. He can't say.
Okay. So then, then we go back to sort of the overtime. And I understand, I mean, the number's been increased. And just like with any company, if you overextend your employees, their mental health, their wellbeing kind of deteriorates, right? I mean, so, you know, when we're trying to figure out how that increase went from this percent or this number to this number, it's because we're overtaxing our, our, our staff. I mean, isn't common sense stuff, right? I mean, am I wrong in saying that?
We have basically 30, 35, or I'm sorry, 30 firefighters right now who are responding to all calls in all four districts. So when you have a cumulative effect of that, yes, I would say you're absolutely right. We can overtax our existing workforce, thus the need for increasing our numbers.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I'll have more questions later. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we all do. So we're going to have to go in rounds where everybody has a chance. Okay. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. Jimmy, thank you for that, for, for the report and for all the work that's gone into this. On that LAFCO Service Review Study where you had the response times that were written up there, I just want to make a clarification because those, the LAFCO response times were from 2018 to 2022, right? So, and our response time was 10:54. You can't really take what happened from your July to October of this year and just put it, put it back in there. That was literally a past study that we can't alter or change. It's nice that we have 8:55 now, but I want to make that correction because the rest of those cities currently might have different response times as well.
Yeah.
So I just want to throw that out there. When you, you've been giving us weekly reports that show when you've had like just regular staff out there to fill the 12-hour portion, what, and, and you said that sometimes it's, it's rare to, to have the engine be three for the full 24. What's preventing you from just saying, you know what, you're there, your regular duty, let's just keep you on for the full 24? Where does that conversation happen? Or is it just decided at like 0800?
So let me see if I understand what you're saying. So what makes us decide for the cutoff at 8:00 PM? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. So it says right here, we're, we're all in agreements. We want that fourth station, right?
Right.
24/7, 365. So there have been many, many times, actually, I would say, just maybe out of the majority of weekly reports you've been given to us, a lot of times it's just regular duty personnel that are out there. You haven't needed an overtime or anybody else. So that's almost like the ultimate goal, right? We're getting there. What would prevent you just from letting them stay there for the full 24? Because they're going to, where are they going to go?
We, we don't have the overtime to pay the additional 12 hours.
Why can't you just keep them on regular time until the next morning?
Well-
You're already paying them regular time.
Okay.
Why can't you keep them on regular time?
Well, okay, we, each firefighter is on duty for 24 hours. So we'll fill the nine minimum. And then if we have any staff that are able to stay over, on overtime for the 12 hours, then we, we, we hire back those, those, those two personnel. If it's just one, then what we'll do is we'll downstaff the Santa Teresa for that, that additional 12 hours and put that extra person into a station to make a fourth person station out of it. So they'll run 4-0 for 24 hours.
Does that answer your question?
No.
Okay. Do you want to-
I guess I'm not understanding.
Well, we haven't been given, we haven't been given that information that we're running 4-0 on an engine. I'm asking, on the times that we've been given where it's regular duty, you have regular duty people that are covering that Santa Teresa station for 12 hours, what would prevent you from keeping them there until the following morning at 0800, letting them do a 24-hour shift if they're already getting paid regular pay? What, what's preventing from that? Because there's been times where they've been to regular duty pay.
That's true. And then, but other stations are short because somebody calls in sick or there's a vacation day.
At eight o'clock at night?
Sometimes at eight o'clock at night.
Okay. So let's say they don't call in sick. What's preventing you from saying, you know what, don't, don't go home. I want you to stay there for a full 24.
Yeah.
Because that's the, that's the ultimate goal.
Yeah. We're, we're not, just so you know, we're not sending anyone home on regular duty. We are not sending anyone home on regular duty.
So where do they go?
They go back to if, if we-
They don't have another regular assignment because we're 3-0, right?
Well, okay. If Santa Teresa is being staffed with one person on overtime and one person on regular time.
Let's put two regular time. Because that's happening.
Yeah. Well, then we would keep them there for 24 hours.
Okay. There we go. So that is, that is something that you plan, but we have not done that. We've sent them home.
Well, that's because, again, there's a, there's a absence in one of the other three stations that we have to staff those.
Chief, if there's not an absence, if there's not an absence, they're staying on duty and they're, and they're continuing at the Santa Teresa Station?
That's correct. Yes. But if they're, again, if-
At, at 8:00 PM, someone calls in sick, then you have, then you shut it down and go back. Is that what you're saying happens?
If they're, I can give you all the detail, but I can tell you that sometimes our vacations are not for just 24 hours, they're just for 12 hours. And sometimes those, sometimes we do have somebody who gets sick in the middle of the shift. And so we do have to downstaff the Santa Teresa for the evening to have them staff the, the regular station, the three fully staffed stations.
Okay. I'm, I'm done for right now. Okay. Thank you.
Lee Ann, is there anything you need to add to clarify? Or are you comfortable? I just want to make sure the question got answered. Okay. Okay. Councilmember Marks.
Yes. I, I guess, just tagging on to what Councilmember Hilton was saying, it looks, it sounds like to me Santa Teresa is kind of the stepchild. You know, they're expendable. That whole area is expendable, which, which I don't like. I'm in agreement with everyone else. We need this station and we need it now. And I don't think 2025 is going to serve anyone really well by holding off for that long. The question is, how do we fund it? I am not a proponent of the sales tax or the parcel tax because I think there's other ways we can do it. And I think the city can dig a little bit into money to do this. And I also believe that the fire department has to look at itself too, because I feel like the overtime has gone really way over. When they are at almost $2 million a year in overtime, that, that would fund a lot of firefighters. And I think they need to start looking at cutting back on some of this overtime, reflecting on themselves, having a very honest talk. Because I believe there has to be a meeting of the minds between the city of Gilroy and the fire department to work together to make this work. Because we need four fire stations. And in reality, with our standards of coverage, we need to look at a fifth. And with all the building coming on for the next Rena cycle, we're not going to make it. It's just going to get worse. I believe the firefighters are overworked and this is part of the reason why they are calling in sick. So we have to have some very serious conversations. Jimmy, I have a question for you. And then I'll let another speaker come on because I have others. But let's go back to the 2 point, what was it, 2.9 or 2.3 million that Glenn Loma gave us for that McClatcham Park?
Mm-hmm.
Well, no, I said 2.3 or 2.9?
2.3.
2.3. Okay. And then what do they owe us? Let's forget about the 2.3. What do they owe us now for the fire station? Is it 8 million?
It's around 8, 8.5 million.
So they're giving us basically 10.7 million dollars for the station?
Correct.
Okay. And how much do we have to kick in as a city?
We don't know. We lasted the design and had the calculations. And there are some value engineering items that we could do. But just remember, the current agreement with Glenn Loma is that they build it. And so we don't have any kind of agreement or any path forward where they just give us the money. We've asked them for that, but they haven't given it to us. But if we had the 8.5 and the 2.3 in this bidding market, I don't know quite what we would get, but that would be the budget we would work with.
So would we give them 2.3 towards the building of that station also?
No, that's ours. We can use that towards the station. So if their, their amount cap is 8.5 and the budget comes in at 10.8, we would use that 2.3 on top of the 8.5.
And if it comes at 13 million?
We'd be doing some value engineering.
Okay. And then, oh, shoot. It just left me. Go ahead. Go to someone else. I'll think of it.
Okay. I'm going to go to myself because the only other person I see on the board is Councilmember Armendaris. And we should all have one round, okay, before, are you wanting to say something to you, Councilmember Klein? No, I just don't see you on here. I'll, I'll go last for the first round. Okay. Then I'm going to, I'm going to start with first, reiterating how hard we have all tried. We've been working at this since 2019 to, to get the station built. And I mean, we still had Chief Klett when, when we were, you know, really working hard on this. So it's, it's, it's exhausting that here we are in 2023 and we're so close to having, to having what we need. We're, we've, we've made our, our, a strong effort. It was made public today, a letter that was sent to Glenn Loma Corporation to see how we're going to move forward with getting either the station or the money as soon, as soon as possible. Here are my questions that we've got in, in this report, Jimmy. I would, I'm asking you to go back to slide 14, if you would. Okay. No?
Yes.
Yes. Slide 14. And I mean, I want, I want to point out that 36 firefighters are what's needed, just the, the base, the base to open, to fully staff four stations. Because you have three shifts, three people per shift, four stations, that math works out to 36. Okay? So, and you're not supposed to count the fire chief, the management analyst, or the fire administration technician, right? You only count the others, correct? As far as being available to, to be one of those 36. So we're, we're at 44 that we've budgeted for minus three, so 41. That's five over the 36. And in 2025, it's 46, three, take away the three, it's 44. I mean, three, right?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'm trying to say is, we've figured out how to fund that many. What we have to look at, so I guess what I'm trying to ask is, if you go back to whatever that slide was then, that showed the 9.7 million that we've spent on stuff, not, well, no, that's not just stuff. People are in there too. Labor agreement, salary, that's all in there too. What's missing, I'm wondering, in a, if, if you can go from one year to the next, nearly tripling sick leave, and when you normally historically have two people out on such long-term leave, and now we've got five, what are we not funding here to help prevent that? I mean, how, how are we justify, how, how are our fire, why is it that our historical numbers of sick leave, I mean, when I add the number of hours of time lost due to injury and time lost due to sick leave, which are historically very, very different than the year before, they've, they've gone up that much. It's 11,000 hours that we've paid for. And, and a big part of why this fourth station isn't staffed 24/7. I mean, that, that is why. So people get sick, people get injured. We understand that. But why is it so much different than what it was the year before? And I'm not asking you to answer that why. What I'm asking is, is there anything that we, the city, could be doing to help, to protect the health and safety of our firefighters while they're on duty that we aren't doing and should be doing, that other cities are doing? Are we doing something different that is making our firefighters more ill than other cities' firefighters?
I'll let Lee Ann talk about that because this is a, something that they deal with through the HR group.
Okay. Because 11,000 hours is, I mean, 11,000 hours.
Well, I think a part of it is aging workforce. We haven't, we, our workforce is-
Aging workforce.
Aging. And so as you get older in this job that you put a lot of your physical body into on a regular basis, it, it affects you differently when you're in your 50s than when you're in your 20s. That's just the way our bodies work.
Right. So is the Gil, I'm just, does the Gilroy Fire Department, are we staffed more heavily with older firefighters than other cities?
We have a mixture, but we have-
I mean, I don't know how else to say that.
We have a mixture, but we do have a segment of our workforce that is in the upper age category. And so that, that's going to cause a greater frequency or risk for injury. We, we do take as many safety precautions as we can. We, we take safety issues very seriously. We constantly are reviewing any incident where an employee is injured on the job, whether it's in the fire department or another department, and ask ourselves, how did that happen? Why did it happen? What can we do to prevent that from happening? That, that discussion led to the Lucas devices that we got because we were only going to get a grant for a couple of them. We figured out a way to get four of them. So we have one- We figured out a way to get four of them, so we have one on each engine to help, help prevent back injuries and other strains from extended CPR. So we look at these things on a regular, ongoing basis in an effort to try to get them down, but just in this last year, we've experienced a significant increase.
Yeah, I mean, it's really significant and it's, it's what, it's why we can't staff that station. It's not that we don't have people hired and we're, we're paying them, they're just not able to be there.
And, and we, in a public setting, cannot, you know, discuss individual situations.
I know, I know, I'm not asking you to, I'm just trying to point out, point this out in the report and that because of this, in order to staff what we absolutely need to staff, we're having to then, not only are we paying for those 11,000 hours, but now we're paying time and a half to somebody who's got to be there instead, because that's what the overtime is. So it, it isn't hard to understand the financial issue here. I mean, the, the huge financial issue that this is causing.
In some instances, that's what's happening.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's why we're, if we continue at the pace we're at, we're going to be a half, we're going to be a half a million dollars over budget on overtime.
Exactly, we can't, we got to address that. So the five that are long-term leave, you can't get into specifics, but.
It's really four with one that's possible.
Right, and that's for injury, workers' comp injury. And when you say long-term, it's because you don't know when they're going to return. There's, they're on injury and there's no doctor saying, they just need two months off or one month off or, it's, it's an unknown thing. So it can go for months.
Correct.
Right, months.
And some have.
And some have. So what point have some gone beyond a year?
Not quite yet.
Okay, but once getting close. At what point do, do you call a, a, a worker's comp injury a disability? I mean, when does it stop becoming regular pay and become, okay, you're, it's a disability?
This would require an extensive conversation about the perils of Labor Code 4850 and, and the law, and then there's a second year, and, you know, there's a lot of different factors and each one is so case-specific and what's happening with that particular employee.
But there is a process for that, right?
But there is a process for that.
Constant evaluations, doctor's appointments, updates on them, why they were injured, what other injuries they're doing.
Yes.
Right? So it's not they're, they're just sitting at home and collecting a check, they have to be reevaluated, they have to be reconfirmed.
Okay, just a sec, I was not saying that they're just sitting around at home, that's not, okay.
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is that there's a process.
There is a process.
Right, it's not just a waiting game.
I'm sure there's a process. I was asking, what is the process that takes you from the, the workers' comp to the disability? Because otherwise, it, it seems like it's an endless, there's a no end date, there's no end in sight, you have no idea how long someone's off on regular pay. If you can't call it a disability, you can't replace the person. And so meanwhile, we're paying that salary plus time and a half to someone else to do the job. And so this becomes an incredible expense to, to the city that then, yeah, that doesn't seem to get, to get very well understood.
Yeah, and it's just a, a challenge and we have to work through that process and go through all the steps of, of each case. And again, each case is very fact, fact-specific.
Right, but again, okay, I'm, I'm going to stop for now, but the, the, the biggest thing that's making an impression on me is 11,000 hours and how much more that is than our historical norm for this last year. And I would sure love to know how that compares to other fire departments, because that's just such a high number, such a high number. Okay, Councilmember Armendaris.
How many, Leanne, how many of those hours, I mean, $2 million is how many hours of overtime?
I do not know.
Do we, we don't have the numbers of, how many hours of overtime?
I do not know.
Our firefighters. Because I, I've stated before, right, and I think we, it goes without saying, like, this is a chicken and the egg-like issue. Our firefighters have to work overtime, which leads to more injury, right? And although they're paid more, I don't think the physical and emotional fatigue, right, and the, the stress of being away from home and family for that long is, I mean, they get paid more for it, right? They get time and a half or whatever, but I think the answer to why, why it costs so much, right? Why that amount is, is, has, is exacerbated, right? It's because of the amount of overtime. Like, everybody knows, like, you work overtime, your body's more tired, you're more likely to get injured, which leads to another person being out, other people collecting overtime. It's, it's a cycle, right?
And you run that alongside the increased call volume that the department's responding to and, and, and we, we are where we are, which is why the long-term recommendation to increase staffing to 45, and that does not include division chiefs, 45 deployable on the engines, is, you know, helps, helps manage that better and helps with the well-being of our employees.
And that language, if we increase to 45, that language, where does it live? Does it live in our city policy?
It's in the budget.
In the MOU?
Budget.
Where do we have, just in the budget?
Just in the budget.
What?
It's what we budget for.
What language is being recommended that would codify them so that we don't end up in the same place we were a couple of months ago, where this has to be brought to our attention, right? Because it's not being followed.
It's, it's, it's what we have approved in the budget and what we can move forward with and, and as Jimmy mentioned, you know, the, having the council do the amendment to the budget and having the ongoing revenue to support the funding of those positions.
And if, so again, if, and if those positions aren't, or if that, those ratios aren't being met, where does that, where can that language be? Where's the accountability, right?
With us.
If it's not an.
Accountability is right here with the council and the ongoing reporting of, of our vacancies, our overtime, our staffing, that's, that's the accountability. But the issue is, how do we pay for it?
These are excellent, I'm agreeing, those are excellent questions, I just think that that is on us. If we have reason to think, okay, we don't want this to happen again, we want these reports monthly.
Well, that, I mean, a few months ago, right, it, it was put on the shoulders of our firefighters to come and bring that to our attention, but it wasn't brought to our attention.
Right, so it's on us to direct what we want. And if we feel like we need information more, we see something that we want, it's like with everything. How do you know that anything's happening that you directed?
So I think that's not good enough, like, it has to be codified somewhere, there has to be a way to hold us accountable, right? And that's through an MOU.
Correct.
Yep, that's what you've said. Okay, Councilmember Bracco.
Yeah, I think everybody agrees that we need that fourth station open. Comes down to financing it. And we as council members can go, need to, to make some hard decisions. There's areas in the budget that we could cut out, there's people we could cut out, but we have to go in and make those decisions. We can't, we can't have it all. We either got to make some hard choices or talk about a tax measure, but, you know, there's no magic money tree out, out behind City Hall that we can go get some money. We all have seen the budget, you know, there, there's not a lot there. So I would encourage anybody that, that wants to do this quick, go into the budget and identify some stuff. You know, do, do we really need this DEI, all this stuff, spending money on that? You know, do we need the new person that was added tonight? You know, there's a lot of stuff that, in the budget, that's there because council wanted it. So I, I think it's just time we have to make the hard decisions. There, there's not, really no discussion about providing the service out there, it's just making the hard decisions on how to pay for it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marks, did you want to go again?
No, I was trying to get my name off.
Okay, then I'd like to go to public comment before we, we, did you have something, Councilmember Klein? I don't see you on my board.
Well, I just, I know in being newly elected and knowing the process or just the problems and its challenges, that the two things I saw specifically was looking at, we talked about the infrastructure and the challenges there. And we, we are looking for that fourth station and that fifth station, but we have station one and two that are in desperate need of, of really being redone. I know we're putting 1.2 to 1.5 million in each one between now and '25, but it just shows the challenges we have because we've not taken care of our stuff over the years. And so how do we, you know, just seeing that path alone, making living conditions better for, for our firefighters on a daily basis. And that's challenging, it's, it's hard to see, to be honest with you. When I reviewed that, walking the stations, I was, I was a little embarrassed on my, on my part, seeing, seeing the stations the way they are. So I, infrastructure is huge, to see those things brought to standards that they need to be. So that's, that's a big concern of mine and naturally how we staff it, that's, that's all part of the conversation, so, thanks.
Yeah, agreed. And don't forget how the increase in our population with no money to deal with that. I mean, the, the numbers for both police and fire, so it's no wonder our service levels have, have had to drop. Okay, I would like to go to public speakers, there are nine, is that correct?
I counted eight, but it could be closer to nine.
Okay, my thing says nine, but.
Okay.
Okay, so do you want to go ahead and call them out? Ty, I've asked you all to come to the front.
First. First speaker is going to be Frank Sase.
So hang on, so there, more cards are coming, so this is two, two minutes then? Is that what?
Let me make sure to make.
Yes, go ahead. Yep.
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's going to be two minutes.
Okay, so go ahead and call, so everybody, the, the clock will be up there, it's, it's two minutes each and in the order that Ty calls you.
First member is going to be Frank Sase, followed by Stephen Hayes, followed by Chris Ingram.
Madam Mayor, Council, I just, my name is Frank Sase. I live at 5510 Karen Court over in the old area of Santa Teresa. So we're directly talking about my house. Full disclosure, I am a firefighter, I worked for the city of Hayward as a fire captain for the last 28 years. I think that it's good to talk numbers, it's good to talk about budgets, but when you're talking about, this has been studied since 2005 and my house and my health is at risk, I think it's just time to get it done. I think Gilroy's big enough and it's not a third-rate city, we're, it's, it's first-class city, we're in California, I think we just need to get it done. I'd like to thank the Gilroy firefighters for bringing this to the public's attention and to my attention, because I had no idea this was going on. As far as the sick leave and the overtime, departments are short all across California, everywhere in California. And the more you're short, the more you have to work overtime. Nobody wants to be away more than, from their family than we already have to be. But we have to work the overtime because you have to staff the rigs. And then the only way you can get off is to call in sick. Also, that's, that's what I wanted to, so thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. Okay, Stephen Hayes? Okay, I'm sorry, but clapping, we've, we've learned in our classes, you can't do that, okay? Please refrain from clapping, you guys, yeah, thanks. Yeah.
I'm Stephen Hayes, I'm the president of the Gilroy Firefighter Station. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I had a whole different speech, but I'm going to talk about the sick leave because I, it was a snapshot that was kind of, I can answer some of your questions. There's long-term leave, there's short-term leave, there's sick leave, there's also overtime for Santa Teresa at night. We were staffing it for 24 for a while, which was two people and 24 hours of overtime at Santa Teresa. Then we started browning it out completely. I can give you my case in point, we had a structure fire, the resident ran back in the building, don't do that. It changed our game plan, I went in, the building fell on me, I was gone for three months, making them work way more than they needed to be, worked really hard to get back fast. But that's kind of the boat we're in, is that if we're not at work, it's forcing one of them to work. And then the other thing is that whenever we overstaff for storms, that's two people extra, if we staff it with three at Santa Teresa, that's three people extra, if we don't have an extra person, that's all in, that's all in that overtime. It's not just people that are sick or calling in sick. Whenever a, a division chief or a battalion chief takes off 24 hours, our local can step up and work 24 hours for them. So that, that's also in that snapshot. So it's not just somebody that calls out or somebody that's hurt long-term. And the other big thing is, we pushed our engines back to the point where we had to borrow one from Santa Clara County because our engines were falling apart. That's happening to us now. Whenever we do the work with nine and our call volume has gone up 123%, the wheels fall off and we start breaking down. So that's what's happening is, we need 12 minimum a day. In fact, at 3,000 calls, we're at like 8,000, that's 18 a day, if we're doing the math right, but I'm, I'm not a CPA, so, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Chris Ingram?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name's Chris Ingram, I'm the president of the Santa Clara County Firefighters Association and a resident here in South County. In our business, response times are a critical component of fire and EMS delivery. Quick response times play a vital role in positive patient outcomes, and during cardiac arrest, every second counts. Unfortunately, we're seeing unprecedented shortages of paramedics throughout the industry, which is contributing to those extended ambulance response times that we talked about. Now more than ever, we need to ensure that our fire resources throughout the county are adequately staffed and that we have paramedics ready to respond. I'd like to urge city council to work closely with your local Gilroy firefighters to find solutions to increase staffing and fully open that fourth fire station to adequately respond to the ever-increasing service demands that you're seeing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Jeff McPhail?
Good evening, Council. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Madam Mayor and the elected officials. I wear a couple of different hats. The first hat I wear is Director for the Gilroy Firefighters Association, and I just wanted to acknowledge your guys' staff, this includes fire chief, city manager, human resources director. They're tough decisions that they have to balance every single day in making these extremely hard decisions that can be challenging, stressing the budget to its maximum end. The other hat that I wear is one as a resident, as a longtime resident of the city of Gilroy. And I know what's really going on, on the streets, day in and day out. I have friends and family here. I love this city and I am dedicated to providing the highest level of service with the tools and the delivery models that you, the elected officials, create through your policies. I would encourage you that by moving from staffing from nine minimum a day to 12 minimum a day, it gives the firefighters a chance to provide the highest level of service to all parts of the city, that's both Santa Teresa, Los Angeles, Chestnut, and Sunrise. Without this moving of the nine to 12, it gives us no assurance that in the evening hours that that station will be staffed. That's what we're here tonight for, is asking, is that we move that from nine to 12 to ensure adequate and equitable services for all. Clearly, I, I'm, I'm juvenile in my understanding of exactly the minutia of the budget, but I understand that it's your guys' job as elected officials to find opportunities and ways to allow the budget to give us the delivery model to help. Lastly, I would say this, like, the Gilroy Firefighters Association is some of the hardest working men and women that I've ever been around. I've gotten a chance to work with actually everyone in our agency and they absolutely love this city. And they will do anything possible to provide the highest level of service to the citizens who ultimately vote for the elected officials. So I just wanted to say that, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. All right, Justin Santos?
Hello, Madam Mayor and members of the board. Longtime Santa Clara County resident, South Santa Clara County resident and firefighter for Santa Clara County Fire Department. And we're here to encourage you guys to continue to work as hard as you can. I know money is money and, you know, it is that chicken before the egg type scenario where it's like the resolution to the problems is, you know, creating less overtime, takes up less of the budget, you're allowed to do a little bit more hiring when that budget is a little bit more square. But it's one of those things too, you know, we talk about overtime very loosely, it rolls off the tongue, oh, the firefighters are working overtime, but I think a part that is missing as well is the realization that the majority of the overtime that these firefighters are working is what's referred to as mandatory overtime. So, you know, we have an oath that we've taken to serve the citizens and the residents who ultimately, you know, pay, pay our paycheck and things like that. But, you know, there are times where it's, you know, I've been working for 72 hours, you know, it's important to recognize that we, you know, work 24-hour shifts, but they're clumped together into 48-hour stands. There might be a time where somebody's on long-term disability or, you know, sick or needs to take some time to take care of their family and, you know, somebody's going to get forced into that position behind them, you know? So we talk about these overtime positions as, it's overtime, it's time and a half and stuff like that. That is a lot of wear and tear that your body and, and your mental state does take by. of wear and tear that your body and your mental state does take by, you know, that being, it's not voluntary overtime, a lot of what you're seeing, you know, that million or so that we see in the budget, that's overtime, a lot of that is shifts that these firefighters are forced to pick up, you know, on the back end to ultimately provide the highest level of service possible to the residents of Gilroy, so it is a tough scenario, and somebody said it earlier, I think some tough decisions are going to have to be made, but I do believe that the local firefighters union here would love to have some additional conversations with you folks to help clear up any questions, whether that's on or off the record, but you couldn't have a better group of people serving your community, so I hope that you guys are able to support them in any way possible.
Thank you. All right, Joe Andrews?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, thank you, Councilmember Tovar, for placing this on the agenda this evening, thank you very much. I grew up in this area, still have family and friends here, so I'm speaking on their behalf. I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that's already gone into this matter over the years, and just ask that you keep working hard and commit to finding solutions to increasing the staffing to 45 firefighters and to fully open that station that everybody agrees that's desperately needed. Just basically, the general public, they don't quite understand, maybe the differences between unfully staffed and fully staffed, but it does make a difference to response times, outcomes, safety of your community and safety of your firefighters. The Gilroy Fire Department is an important piece of the California statewide mutual aid plan, and staffing levels matter when providing help to neighbors and when the time comes that you guys have to ask help from your neighbors as well, so that station and that fully-staffed membership will play a part, not only for your community, but the whole state in desperate times of need. Your citizens in the city of Gilroy deserve fully-staffed fire department, and this will allow for the continued quality and professional emergency response service provided by your great Gilroy Fire Department. So thank you for working so hard on it, and just hope you could find a way to make it happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Ron Kirkish, followed by Marty Estrada.
Good evening again, Mayor. The question was asked about how many fires or how many deaths do we have in that general area? I can vouch for at least two fires, one at the Christmas Hill Restrooms, and then on the hillside above the brush fire, grass fire, above the red barn. So we do have problems there. We, I don't think we even really found why the fires happened, you know, I believe they're probably homeless or something like that, and we're hopefully fixing that. I'd also like to say that, you know, I'd like to add a fifth category on funding, you know, we had the 25 cent tax increase, sales tax increase, but I would like to seriously add, I mean, this is serious, when a project comes before you of potential revenue, that you take into consideration that that revenue could be like throwing a quarter into a jar, and the more of those kind of revenues that you get, the bigger the jar gets, or the more filled the jar gets with revenue, so when we do have potential revenue sources come before you, please think about that, not just about politics or what one group thinks about another group or whatever, think about what that money can do and build up to help our fire, our police. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Marty Estrada, and then followed by Jeff Klett.
Good evening, everybody, council members, Mayor, I don't know if this is the right time to talk about, my name is Marty Estrada, I am the Community Director for Community Agency Resources Advocacy and Services, I just want to also remind everybody that we're still waiting for a youth center to be built, we'd like a bond to be placed with that, to get that money upfront, I know the firefighters are asking for funding as well, but if you want to find out what's going on with their issues, with their staffing or whatnot, or their overtime, do an audit, just do an audit like everybody else does, and you'll find out what's in that audit. Also, I wanted to bring to attention that I just pulled up, just as we're sitting here listening to the firefighters, there's a bill, it's a Fire Station Act that authorizes 750 millions for fire station construction grants, that's another way you can look at funding, is somebody in your team develop looking for grants that provide funding for this kind of services. So one of the ways you can do it is look for grants, that bill, they'll give you the money, federal money to build a fire station, that's an easy fix, you can look at it, I do grants all day too, and I get grants, but that's a way that you all can start looking at some support to fix this problem. But here in the city of Gilroy, we're waiting for a youth center, we need a youth center, we just opened up a youth hub, we're stacking it right now with 45 to 75 kids daily, but we need a youth center to bring it to full fruition, to make sure that all community members, all citizens of Gilroy can use a center dedicated for youth. There's 17,000 kids here under the age of 18 here in Gilroy, and they need a youth center, so I want to keep that on the burner, that we need to get a bond, get the money upfront to build this youth center, because it's vital and important, just like the firefighters need a house, we also need a house as well. Thank you.
All right, former Chief Klett, followed by Saul Gonzalez.
This feels old school back again. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Jeff Klett, and I was the permanent Gilroy Fire Chief from 2002 through 2004, when we completed the first comprehensive fire standards, the covered master plan in 2002. It recommended that the city open a third fire station in the northwest quad area, as a result, the Fire Department recommended and the City Council approved a two-person alternative service model, ASM, sound familiar? This started at the Sunrise Fire Station using a mobile home, and it provided service while the fire station was being constructed, and despite what was said earlier, this staffing remained in place through 2007, when the city made a decision to close the fire station for about a year and a half. At the same time, the study recommended a fourth fire station in the planned development area known as the Glen Loma or Santa Teresa area. I point this out because it has now been more than 20 years that the city's known that additional firefighting resources would be necessary as the city continued to approve additional development and the population increased. In 2018, I was hired to be the city interim fire chief and was immediately tasked with updating the 2000, the original coverage, standards of coverage master plan, and it was part of a South County review, and it focused on the Glen Loma-Santa Teresa area. The 2018 report was very clear, the Santa Teresa area was substantially receiving substantially slower service than the other areas of the city, sounds like that is continuing today as well. Again, we initiated a pilot project, again, called an ASM, and this was the same approach that was used to provide the service at the Sunrise Fire Station. This service model was based on the use of a small non-fire engine, service vehicle, sorry about that.
Thank you for giving it to us in writing, so we have that too.
No problem.
All right, thank you. Saul Gonzalez, followed by Jeff, is it Unadia?
Yes.
Jeff, One Day.
Hello, good evening, members of the council, my name is Saul Gonzalez, I'm also a member of GARDAS, I'm a youth case manager there, I just wanted to mention and actually applaud your efforts, I'm not opposing to be a firefighter to get a new station, I am actually for it, I'm just wanting to make sure that you all keep in mind when you do, if you do write the measure in the ballots, or whoever does that, to keep, to make sure that the public safety does not include sort of the youth, so the youth can also get an opportunity to get that youth hub that we're waiting for. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to hear me, and I want to recognize and applaud the members of the firefighter and their awesome, outstanding effort to serve the community, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Jeff, Unadia.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Chief Espinoza, Chief Wyatt, Jeff Unadia, long-term resident of Gilroy, retired San Jose firefighter after 30 years, so just going to give you some context to what we're talking about tonight as far as response times, so let me place you in a scenario that relates to the subject, okay? You're a parent of a six-month-old child, unconscious, unresponsive, you're on the phone with 911 doing infant CPR, and 911 is telling you five minutes, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, fire paramedics will be there. Imagine the feelings of desperation and helplessness. Now, this is not just a scenario, this is an actual call that I went to as a firefighter, it wasn't the parents doing the CPR, it was me and my crew. This is 20 years ago, and it comes right back to me. Parents were watching us as the radio kept saying, "The ambulance paramedics are delayed, five, 10, 15 minutes, eventually 30 minutes." Unfortunately, the child died. Even after all this time, I still remember the feeling of frustration, anguish, and thinking, "We're the ones that are supposed to be saving lives here, and we had to wait." Those are the tough questions, the tough questions you have to, we had to answer that night was, what do you say to the parents? How do you console them in that situation? I mean, we're all, pretty much everybody's a parent here, so you know that feeling of loss of a child. What dollar amount do you place on a human life? I just don't want, I don't want that situation, I know it's a situation that happens day in, day out.
I'm sorry.
Oh, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Does that conclude, public speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have no other speaker cards.
Okay, thank you to all who came and took the time to speak tonight. Okay, so that brings this back to City Council, so are there any other council members ready to say some more? Councilmember Tovar, are you saying you're ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Deon, you want to go first, Deon? Nope, is that you? Okay, all right. Jimmy, question. Can you remind us what our current city reserve is at the moment?
Our financial district says about 30 million.
30 million, okay. Given that this is a, obviously a public safety issue and concern, could we not, to get those firefighters funded, could we not use a one-time funding from our reserve until we find, you know, a long-term solution to help fund this? Is that possible?
It is possible.
Okay, good, I mean, that's something I would ask the council to think about, and then the comment that was made earlier, and we'll go back to a discussion that we had or a vote that we had a few months ago regarding the digital billboard, where I believe that income was going to be to the city about $500,000? Maybe we need to have that discussion again, if that money can be used to help fund our firefighters, why would we not, you know, reexamine that and see if we can utilize those fundings for this type of issue and concern? So, that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Barco? Oh, you, that's okay, I didn't think so, that's why I didn't call, but I wasn't sure. Okay, Councilmember Armin, oh no, Councilmember Hilton, you're next.
Thank you. I deeply appreciate the brothers and sisters of the Gilroy Fire Local 2805 for, you know, calling us out when we come up short, I really appreciate that, we can't succeed without your input and support, you literally are boots on the ground, and even those shared experiences from the San Jose firefighter as well. Thank you to the community for providing your lived experiences last month in emails and here tonight. We established a minimum standards in 2019, and for now, that includes a Santa Teresa 12-hour unit, which we're struggling to cover. We can't reduce our overall citywide times and Santa Teresa District without staffing this company on a regular basis. And, you know, I want us to be able to try to, along with talking about the several other recommendations, I want us to be able to try to see if we can get out of here what Councilmember Armandaris talked about. There needs to be a better way for labor and management to negotiate on good faith, but to also have those conversations amongst each other at the staff level without having to go through this again, because it's going to happen again if we don't solve something. I don't, I don't believe that, you know, simply having a tax measure, you know, go on next year, and it's going to put this stuff off, I do think that we can do something right now, and maybe the reserve is something, you know, like that, but, you know, we walked away here last month without directing staff to open up the MOU for the firefighters for the 12 minimum. I don't know if anybody up here has changed their mind on how they feel that way, but I believe at a very minimum, we should either be opening up the MOU to get us to 12 a day, but to have a matrix for staff on how that backs down every single day, because I'm still confused about if we had two firefighters that were working the Santa Teresa unit, why can't they just stay? I was confused about that, but I understand that it's a daily process, and I appreciate all this stuff from staff, but either a side letter or opening of that MOU needs to be codified, and obviously that happens in closed session, that's not going to happen tonight, but there needs to be some type of matrix so that staff and management can go down the matrix every single day and follow it, and that way, if somebody's not following it, the firefighters have the option to grieve it, that is their right as a union bargaining unit, and at the same time, lastly, what I want to say is, why is sick hours gone up? I could personally testify to what it's like working a 48-hour shift, but I know there's somebody in this room right now who's a Gilroy firefighter, worked on a shift 48 hours and had 48 hours of sleep. Try going home being a parent, try go home being a spouse, try just functioning like in a daily adult, and now having to come back and do that again, it's the increase in call volume, I don't blame them for calling in sick, and at the same time, we've been told before, there's a 40% increase of calls since 2016, and that's not, that's not coming down anytime soon. So hopefully, amongst our discussions up here, we can walk away with some good direction tonight, and like I said before, either it's opening up that MOU, or it's a side letter. Thank you.
Reserve.
Thank you, and no one was questioning what could cause the need for sick, it was, why is it nearly 300% what it was last year? That was the question, and why is long-term leave up to almost five instead of the two that it typically is historically? That's all that comment was.
But I think it was more than, your comment also, Councilmember Marks, was saying, you know, the firefighters need to look inward as to why, you know, this, why there's sick time and overtime, and I think that, you know, I think it was inferred, so I think clarification was necessary.
Don't put words in someone else's mouth.
Or putting them down, I think for us to get to some answers, we have to look at all the reasons why this is happening, and I agree with Councilmember Tovar, if we can go to the reserve, they need relief right now, and also, hopefully with that relief, the overtime is going to decrease because they're not being so stressed, it goes hand in hand, and what I was saying is, let's all look for these answers and move forward, and I really would hope that we're not going to do this months from now to have a final, you know, analyze and what we're going to do, I would love to see this brought back in December, where we go on break with an actual solution and let's get some relief for the Fire Department.
Okay, Councilmember Armandaris.
Yeah, so, I'd like to know, Jimmy and Leanne, like, what is, what are we going to do in the immediate? Because we're, right now, we're gambling with the lives of our residents, of our firefighters, with their health, with their safety, with that, you know, their property, and a tax measure isn't guaranteed to pass, right? It's a tough, 2024 is a general election, you know, tax measures usually do pass, but it's not guaranteed, these are tough times, so, aside from, is pulling out of our reserve, is that the only option for immediate stopgap? What else do we have?
You, solving it with money is not an immediate solution, even if you were to direct staff to increase staffing from 40 to 45 firefighters and use reserves to pay for it, it could be years until you get to that 45 level.
And if we put a ballot measure on the, in 2024, it'll be voted on in 2024 and implemented in January 2025, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's still a whole year out.
But go back to why it would take so long.
You have to recruit, you have to train, you have to get firefighters ready to be deployed, it takes a considerable amount of time, and having the, and then you're also replacing workforce that's leaving, so you're kind of chasing your tail, so it takes time.
But we still can't do it without the money.
I, we can't do it without the money, and I'm going to, I want to be very clear, it would be highly not- would be highly not recommended to use one-time money. That could have catastrophic financial implications to the city, both in our bond rating, our credit rating, and our overall evaluation by the state auditor. That is, as we are told in the business, a very big no-no.
By pulling out that amount from our reserve?
For ongoing operations. That's why the majority of our excess reserve goes into one-time projects, but staff are paying for ongoing expenses with one-time money is, makes me extremely nervous.
Catastrophic, you said?
I think it's catastrophic, yes.
And you could, we can bring back that information and show us how?
Yeah.
And what that means?
Yes.
Okay. Has everybody gone a second? Okay, you would be a third, Councilmember Tovar, so I'm letting everybody go, okay? Councilmember Barco.
I would like to see us, at bare minimum, at least have a two-person medical response unit there twenty-four hours a day, until we can figure everything out. Jimmy, have we looked at what that would cost?
I don't know that we've directly looked at what that costs, but it doesn't eliminate some of the issues. If a two-person medical response unit is dispatched, another engine has to go with them, so then you've taken five out of the system for that one call. So, I mean, it is something we can look at, but it is.
Why does an engine have to go with them?
According to the city's MOU, a 2805, on a 911 call, and if you have a two-person unit, you have to dispatch an additional engine to go with it. Three-person engine.
Okay.
So that would even be more expensive, in the long run?
It could.
I, so, Councilor, I have some things to say right before we go. Okay. So I, where would I want to go with this? I want to commend staff for writing that letter to county, the county, because that's part of our problem too, is when the service that we pay for through the county is not responding even remotely close to what it's supposed to be responding to, then we end up having to cover, and that takes away, that totally takes away then from the resources that we have too. So this problem is so compounded by so many different facets, that, A, we got to get the fire station there, a permanent station. And when those modular units come, that's going to help, but it is such a shame that we are put in this position to have to spend any money at all, four hundred thousand, five, whatever it is, on this temporary stuff that should at least be going on the site that is ultimately required to be dedicated to the city. And we can't do that. That's just a fact, the way it is. We're doing what we can to get the development agreement to be adhered to, and we're doing what we can to get county to do the job that they're supposed to do for the contract that we're paying them to do. Beyond that, I'm, I would like to suggest that we consider all of the things that staff is suggesting we have them come back to us with, so that we have all of the, all of the options. One would be the sales tax, because we can't just address fire in a vacuum. Fire is not the only department that is understaffed, and we know that. Public safety is a combination of police and fire. So it's both of those things. And that we authorize staff to explore alternative models, whether or not it's what you suggest, Deon, or something else, because that's going to cost more, and that we look at all the things that are in the staff suggestion, because they're all important, and they're all things that are going to help us better decide how to rectify something that we thought we'd already solved, you know, but for the, what it's causing in increasing leave time, whether it's over sick or whatever, the system that we've got going is causing more of our firefighters to not be able to report to work, for one reason or another.
Mayor, do you also mean to include contracting out?
That's not on here.
Okay. It was in the, in the original.
No, I'm talking about, I know, but I'm talking about where it says on page twenty-two.
I just want to be clear.
Yeah, staff is recommending to council to direct to enact the following options. One, two, nowhere in it does it talk about contracting out.
Just clarifying.
Okay. So I would make that a motion. If there's a second, we can continue discussion. If not, we'll just continue with discussion.
Also.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Councilmember Tovar, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, so, let's go back to what the council was charged to do, to find solutions here, right? So, and I commend my fellow council members for all wanting the same thing, but now we're getting to the nitty-gritty of how do we fund this, right? So, again, there's several different options. Opening up the MOU, the reserve, Jimmy had mentioned it was an ongoing, but no, it would be a stopgap until we find the funding to move forward with it. So I don't see it as a continuous funding, I think it's a one-time funding to get this, get something done, because it's been too many years of us trying to figure out how to get this done. So that, and then going back to my original comments from way back when, is exploring and applying for grants that may help us with this. And then also, what Councilmember Barco mentioned earlier, that we look within the organization, see where we can cut and find some funding that way. So we have solutions to helping to get us to where we want to be, now we just have to figure it out. And again, if it's a reserve, we do have a healthy reserve, and if it's a one-time stopgap, then we should explore that. If not, we open up the MOU. Those are my recommendations.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
So what do you mean by, so you're suggesting that we don't open up that, we don't direct staff to open up the MOU and negotiate on good faith tonight?
No, I'm saying that, I mean, if it, we should open up the MOU.
I'd like to see that in these recommendations. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Like, I'd like to be able to recommend that we do that.
Yes.
So in that way, it's codified at some level between staff and management moving forward.
Yeah.
Because it's not, it's not changing.
Right. No, yeah, thank you, no, thank you for clarifying. Yes, I would like to see that open.
Mayor? So I, yes?
Mayor, but isn't it true that we do not have to open the MOU to hire people?
Yes, that is true.
So what would be, what is the only reason why you want to open the MOU? Wasn't it to hire people?
Well, yes, it's to help hire folks, but again, I want us to move forward on something that's not going to take years to happen, right? And by opening up that MOU, now it puts us in a position where now we have to, we have to come out with some action.
And the staffing ratios are part of the MOU, because it's a condition of work.
Right, it's part of the MOU.
We could hire twenty officers tonight if we had the money to do it without opening the MOU.
But we're not looking to hire officers.
Yeah, we're not looking to hire officers. We're not even talking about officers.
I'm sorry. I meant firefighters. They're public safety. Okay? It's not.
But we need a process.
What you said, Councilmember Marks, is correct. Okay? What Councilmember, what I hear Councilmember Hilton and Armandares saying, I'm not quite sure if it's what Councilmember Tovar is saying, is that they want to, they want to force the, in the MOU, they would like to try to change. They want to change what the MOU is, something that goes until 2026.
It's a method of accountability, right? Staffing ratios are about the health and safety of our firefighters and our residents, right? They're the ones fighting so that our residents have adequate response times, and that's dictated by how many firefighters we have on duty.
Yes.
And it's a negotiation of good faith.
And that is, it's part of their contract. They shouldn't have to, but it's part of their contract.
And we have MOUs with all of our labor groups, not just with fire.
But that's, we're talking about fire tonight.
I know, but you can't open one and not know that you're opening them all.
That's not true. That's not how a negotiation works.
You can actually.
No, it's not.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. I am not amenable to amending my motion to include that.
Okay, then I have a substitute motion.
But I do, I would add in the motion that we continue with our, the reports that we've been getting from city staff as to exactly what the fire staffing has been, so that we are in fact notified, which is what you're trying to say is the missing piece into wanting to go forward. So that I would be happy to put in, if that helps.
It's not the missing piece for me, because I don't want reports to come back with.
Okay, then never mind, then the motion will just stand.
A tragedy, you know, and continuing.
Does it help you, Councilmember Marks?
Response times that are excessive and dangerous.
Does it help you to have a required report come back from the city each time? Okay, so I'll put that in the motion. Would that be okay with you, Councilmember Barco? Okay.
I have a substitute motion.
Okay.
I want to try to see if we can push this farther. My motion would be to include everything you included, Mayor, everything, but I would like to see your recommendation back to staff to open up the MOU, to negotiate in good faith, to try to get us to twelve members per day, okay? But have some sort of metrics in order that you all go through every day, every morning, and sometimes we've heard it, eight PM at night. That needs to be codified somewhere.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're going to go right back to where we were in early 2023, when this station was browned out, closed down, whatever you want to call it, multiple, multiple, multiple days in a row. And that will happen again. It could happen again, no doubt. That's my substitute motion.
But you know what bothers me is that we have forty-one hired firefighters. We only need thirty-six. So even if we went with your motion, we have no guarantee of the number of people that would not be able to report into work for either illness or injury, and we'd be right back to where we're starting.
Councilmore, Council, Marks, I appreciate that, but you can't assume, okay? You're assuming that that's.
I don't think I'm assuming. We saw the report.
Does the substitute motion have a second? That first has to happen.
Second.
Okay.
And so, a brief discussion, since it is my motion, and talk back to you about it. It's a, you're not, you're not forcing the city to have to go out and like find people. It's not, it's not a people thing. It's a, it's a process, right? So it'll be like, hey, our goal is, like this said on the last live, our goal is to open up Station Four, staff at twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. That's our goal. That's what we would have in there. But at the same time, you could have, you could have a mutual understanding, right? Negotiate in good faith. There might be times where we can have the twenty-four, seven station that happens right there, right? But what we could do is, you could say, if that can't happen, then a minimum this happens, right? Let's say we have two people, a minimum, for twenty-four hours, like Councilmember Barco said, right? It's this sequence that happens, obviously happens every day at eight AM, and sometimes in the evening, that goes down. That all needs to be codified. We can't manage that on our own. This was highly intensive for most of us to deal with over the last few months, because there's so many moving parts. That's why you give, you would give the direction to staff to negotiate in good faith to get us there, and that would obviously happen during closed session, all those details. But that's how we can get there. That's how I believe we can get there.
Okay, our city attorney needs to say something.
Yeah, I think on the substitute motion, the matter isn't agendized to open the MOU. That's not on the agenda here. I think, I want to clarify that the substitute motion, which you would have to vote on whether to substitute it, but it's a substitute motion to have staff explore and come back to the council about the issue of opening the MOU. Because I don't think, you can't vote to open the MOU tonight. That's not agendized, there's no, it would be a Brown Act violation to do that.
Correct, that's not what I requested.
Okay, but I wasn't sure what you said.
I did what you, what you said.
Okay. In other words, to have staff explore opening the MOU.
Exactly. That would come back with a series of recommendations, so we can talk about it.
Then you have to vote now on whether or not to substitute the motion.
Yeah, I don't support the substitute motion. I believe, I know, I can already hear that there are three, so that needs to be voted on first, is, first, you need to vote on Councilmember Hilton's substitute motion. So Ty, that's, and if we need the screen to do it, I messed, mine got messed up. I need you to come fix this.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I will go ahead and just do a roll call vote on this.
Okay, thanks. So to be, everyone, you're voting on the substitute motion.
On the substitute motion, Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
No.
So the motion passes quarter three.
Okay. So we don't need to even vote on the second one?
Correct.
Okay.
So that brings us.
Sorry. That brings us to item twelve, which is city administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have two quick reports. One is the Gilroy Recreation Staff was recently informed that they received a Proposition Sixty-four Youth Community Access Program grant. The grant supports youth access to natural and cultural resources with a focus on low-income[1711.38]